Good evening and welcome to the City of Avonel City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is a city council meeting today to conduct city business with the community, not a community meeting with council. So for that reason, I will ask you to be respectful to each other, to please follow the protocol and please do not interrupt. And there is a time for public comments, for closed session items, also for public comments. And I will try to do a speedy meeting. And I would like to ask you to please silence your cell phones and also please listen to to the agenda. With that, it is June 26, 2025. We apologize for the agenda that was set April 10. But I believe now everybody has the correct agenda, June 26, 2015. The time is by 20:34. So with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. And would you please stand with me for the pledgement?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior party of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again and welcome. And it is nice actually to see the committee engaged with the way the community is moving forward. I will ask our city clerk to please do roll call to make sure we do have a call.
Councilman Reynosa?
Here.
Councilman Verdugo?
I'm here.
Councilman Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Protim Gómez?
Mayor Preciado?
Here. For the record, we have everybody pressing. With that, would you also read the statement?
Government Code Section 54952.3, the members of the city council successor agency are entitled to receive a total of $450 per month due to their serving on the city council. They receive no other compensation for serving as a member of the successor agency.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into item number three, which is public comments, announcements, and unscheduled appearances. Would you also read the statement?
This is the time reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest and that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits any of the city council from commenting or acting on matters not near the agenda. There are asked that you keep your comments concise and positive.
Thank you.
Creative criticism presents with appropriate courtesy is welcome. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes and our a timer will be modified. We notify you when your time is expired. Please begin your comment and state and provide your place of residence.
Thank you again. And with that, we'll go into present our new employees, which is the summer community activities staff. I believe Melada will take this into action.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'd like to present to you this year's summer staff. We have Cynthia Nieto with us, Caleb and Isabel. So Cynthia and Caleb both are returners from last year. We have Cynthia who heads our social media pages. She does all our outreach for the program, for scheduling all the summer activities. Caleb is just a ball of energy. He shows up, he keeps the kids busy. He was in the pool all day yesterday with the kids and then probably came home and still went to football practice to go help train. And then we have Isabel who comes to us with educational background. She is a substitute teacher for the recent unified school district. And she's been cooking with the kids and doing crafts and keeping them busy. That's our summer staff for this year.
With that, now we'll open public comments. Oh, I'm so sorry for that. We do have another item, which is to present the new employees who are the summer community activity staff, I believe, interns.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. This week, well, today, we are excited to introduce our five selected interns for the City of Avonel's 2025 Summer Internship Program, the fourth cohort. This program was created to support our local youth by exposing them to professional opportunities in public service and helping them develop valuable workplace skills. Our goal is to empower the next generation of leaders, especially those who are passionate about giving back to their community. This year, we received 15 applications, making the selection process a bit more competitive. We carefully selected individuals who demonstrated a strong commitment to community involvement and personal growth. Throughout the summer, each intern will rotate through multiple city departments, including Public Works, Administration, Finance, Rec, Animal Control, and more. To gain firsthand experience, explore the interests, and see how each part of the city works together to serve our residents. At the end of the program, the interns will present a final community project that reflects what they learned and what they want to contribute to the community. And there is a time for public comments, for closed session items, also for public comments. And I will try to do a speedy meeting and I would like to ask you to please silence your cell phones. And also, uh, please, uh, listen to, uh, to the agenda. With that, uh, it is June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. We apologize for the, uh, the agenda that, uh, was set, uh, April ten. Uh, but I believe now everybody has the correct agenda, June twenty-six, twenty fifteen. The time is, uh, by twenty, by thirty-four. So with that, I would like to, uh, call the meeting to order. And would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior of our borders, for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again and welcome and, uh, it is nice actually to see the committee engaged with, uh, with the way the community is moving forward. Uh, I will ask our city clerk to please do roll call to make sure we do have a crew.
Councilman Reynosa.
Here.
Councilman Verdugo.
I'm here.
Councilman Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gómez.
Mayor Preciado.
Here. For the record, we have everybody pressing. Uh, with that, uh, would you also read the statement?
Government Code, Section five four nine five two point three, the members of the city council successor agency are entitled to receive a total of four fifty per month due to their serving on the city council. They receive no other compensation for serving as a member of the successor agency.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into item number three, which is public comments, announcements, and unscheduled appearances. Uh, would you also read the, uh, statement?
This is the time is reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items of interest and that are not on the agenda and are in, are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits any of the, of the city council from commenting or acting on matters not near the agenda. There are asks that you keep your comments concise and positive.
Thank you.
Um, a creative, creative criticism presents with appropriate courtesy is welcome. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes and our A timer will be modified. You, notify you when your time is expired. Please begin your comment and state and provide your place of residence.
Thank you again. And with that, we'll go into present our new employees, which is the summer community activities, uh, staff. I believe, uh, Melada will take this into action.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'd like to present to you this year's summer staff. We have Cynthia Nieto with us, um, Caleb and Isabel. So Cynthia and Caleb both are returners from last year. Um, we have Cynthia who heads our social media pages. She does all our outreach for the program, um, for, um, scheduling all the summer activities. Um, Caleb is just a ball of energy. He, um, shows up. He keeps the kids busy. Um, he was in the pool all day yesterday with the kids and then probably came home and still went to football practice to go help train. And then we have Isabel who comes to us with, um, educational background. She's a, she's a substitute teacher for the recent unified school district. And she's been cooking with the kids and doing crafts and keeping them busy. That's our summer staff for this year.
With that, now we'll open public comments. One more. Oh, I'm so sorry for that. We do have another item, which is to present the new employees who are the summer community activity staff, and I believe interns.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. This week, well, today, we are excited to introduce our five selected interns for the City of Avena's twenty twenty-five summer internship program, the fourth cohort. This program was created to support our local youth by exposing them to professional opportunities in public service and helping them develop valuable workplace skills. Our goal is to empower the next generation of leaders, especially those who are passionate about giving back to their community. This year, we received fifteen applications, making the selection process a bit more competitive. We carefully selected individuals who demonstrated a strong commitment to community involvement and personal growth. Throughout the summer, each intern will rotate through multiple city departments, including public works, administration, finance, rec, animal control, and more. To gain firsthand experience, explore the interests, and see how each part of the city works together to serve our residents. At the end of the program, the interns will present a final community project that reflects what they learned and how they hope to give back to the community. We are also proud to share that this year's program received generous sponsorship from A and M Engineering, Mid Valley Disposal, and the Public Interest Law Firm, which helped cover the stipend for one of our interns. We are deeply grateful for their investment in Avena's future leaders, and now I'll let our interns introduce themselves.
One by one.
Hello and good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Reno. I am a recent graduate from the class of twenty twenty-five from both West Hills College Kalinga and Avena High School. Upon hearing about this opportunity, I was intrigued and wanted to learn more and as I researched more, I decided to apply for it. And I'm very interested in giving back to my community. This community is the only place I've known as home since I was raised here in Avena my entire life. I am proud to be a part of this team and give back to the community that I love. I want to know that by the end of this intern, I had given it my all that I could have. And I plan to further my education by attending Fresno State this fall, and I'm going to be majoring in biochemistry. I can't wait for the future, but I know with this internship, whatever skills I gain, I will carry on with, for, with me for the rest of my life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Damian Blanco. And I'm excited to join the City of Avena as an intern. And I am a proud graduate of the class of twenty twenty-five from Avena High School. And with the passion to always wanted to serve my people and my community. And I'm just grateful that the city chose me and I am honored for that. So this opportunity lets me combine the way I grew up around y'all, around everybody. And my desire to help everybody in this city grow, to bring more awareness to what goes on here. And, and my goal is just to bring something fresher to the city, a new energy. I just feel like everybody's the same. And I always felt different, so I just want to be able to help those that feel different. So, and I already knew I had these skills, but working for the city helps me sharpen them and actually use them. So I know I'm basically, you know, I kind of getting stuck right now, but I'm getting good at public speaking. Like this opportunity is giving me better way to sharpen my skills. So, um, and my future goals is to go to trade school and go to university after, so I could be a white collar and a blue collar worker. Thank you, each and one of you, for this opportunity, and I promise I won't disappoint. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cecilia Melendez. I am currently serving as an intern for City of Avena. I am very excited and interested for this opportunity to see more about the city, to learn more about the city, and to see how decisions are made and how the city comes together to come up with city comes together, uh, city runs smoothly. I'm currently studying to get a degree in business in Lomor College. And this opportunity is great because it relates to what I am studying. My goal is to grow my communication and always be there to assist others. Thank you. I look forward to learning more during my time with the city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Hernandez. Um, I just recently graduated this June and May from, um, West Hills Kalinga and from Avena High School with my AA in plant science. Um, in the fall, I will be attending Fresno State for a major in criminology and a minor in philosophy. Um, I've always been very involved in my community, uh, not only just for volunteer hours, but you know, on my own free time. Because I've always been very passionate about it, and this is an opportunity to just grow more into that community and become more involved because this, it's different departments, it's different experiences, and honestly, so far, it's pushed me a lot out of my com- of my comfort zone. Honestly, it's a lot more than just work experience. It's also personal growth, and I really appreciate that. And, um, further on, I do hope to become, um, a lawyer, attending law school, and then, um, one day come back here and give back to the community. I think that's what's most important, to not forget where my roots are. And I'm very grateful for this experience and have a good evening.
Hello, everyone. I am Diego Celis. I am very grateful to have been selected as an intern for this summer. I am also a recent high school graduate, um, class of twenty twenty-five. I am attending, um, West Hills Community College this year, um, in summer school, and I will be attending fall. I plan to transfer to UCLA and complete my last two years of university there, and then attend UCLA Law School and, um, graduate and become an attorney. I am, I've had, um, a lot of fun in the, these past two departments. I've been in finance and now I am in code enforcement, and it has been so much fun in both. And I am thankful to all of you for this, um, opportunity once again.
Well, I just would like to welcome each one of you. And I believe it was a tough process. I believe the city received sixteen or eighteen applications? Fifteen applications. So out of the fifteen, five, five were selected. I didn't run that operation, but, uh, I believe that, uh, you guys are going in the right direction. Public service is very difficult, but, uh, I also seen some of you, I believe some of you are also recipients of the Rotary and Avena, uh, scholarships. I believe that happened Wednesday night here at the theater. So I condemn you for all the work you guys are doing and wish you the best in the future. Also, the, the, uh, summer, uh, program, some of them, like Anna mentioned, they're coming back. But every year, they've been actually doing an excellent job. And we're looking forward to continue that, uh, collaboration. And, uh, I'm glad that the city was able to fund, uh, these programs because they make a big difference in a small community like ours, connecting graduates, people going to college, coming back, giving back to the community. I believe that's the goal of every city. Working together, being united. Thank you. Thank you much.
Yeah, absolutely. And do want to, you know, congratulate each of the, uh, each of the candidates. The interviewing process was very difficult. But we tried to find a mix of students who show a lot of promise and potential, wanting to give back and serve their communities. And eventually, hopefully, that they do come back as the councils will, where we have had two of our summer interns able to return, Noa Narajo and then Carla Correa, who's been helping quite a lot at the city. I mean, they've, um, been managing and helping a lot with the summer program this year, with the summer interns. And as you can see, they've helped in a wide variety of things in the last two weeks. Not just in the food distributions, but also the town hall meetings we've had. They've been in animal control. We even had Damian, who was out there, uh, hot patching. Yep. So, and I think they've had a lot of fun, and I was, this is the beginning of the summer, so we'll still have them for another month, month and a half. So you'll be seeing them around quite a bit. And just want to thank Carla for helping manage and scheduling all these kind of jobs and working with each department, something a little different. We've always kind of had them do project for project, but now we're trying to give them experience at every department. I think that will help them out in the long run.
Yeah. And, uh, lastly, you know, uh, the, the city is grateful for your, uh, volunteer, um, volunteering, uh, initiative that you guys have. But just remember that this is the vision that the city has, to give you the tools to go and succeed in the future and, and hopefully be able to provide not just for your city, but for your state and for your nation. You know, that, that must be a must for everyone. Thank you for your service. With that, we'll, thank you again. So now we'll open public comments, so please, uh, come to the podium and, uh,
Dalila Barajas.
You need to what? Oh, fresh batteries, okay. Is that going to take on my time? No?
No.
Can you hear me? Yes. Awesome. I don't want to scream. My name is Dalila Barajas. I am a United States citizen and a registered voter. I reside here in Avena, California. Ms. Ortiz, um, city clerk. Is there a way that I can? They're in order. The names are at the top.
Thank you.
I have a notice of intention to circulate recall petition that you now have in front of you. Mayor Presado, Mayor Pro Tem Gómez, Council Hernandez, and Council Reynosa, you have been served. The citizens of Avena, the grounds for the recall as follows. The citizens of Avena have decided to revoke their vote due to the lack of transparency, accountability to the public, and duplicitous behavior leading to the failure of the city councillors to represent the best interest of Avena citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Julie Moran.
Julie Moran, eight oh one North Fifth, Avena, California. I've been a resident. And I'm not going to give away my age, but sixty-plus years. The city has been so disingenuous with the county in dealing with the fire contract. And now they forced it into the next year's budget, which we probably won't have a chance to even discuss.
Can you, would you please get closer to the mic? I think you're too far.
Can you hear me now? I do want to say that I apologize to several council members for yelling and I am so emotionally involved to this because I see somebody wanting to create their dynasty and taking away our safety. Several things that are not in the budget tonight, can you hear me? Are the revenues. The revenues of this city, the landfill host fees have more than doubled. And that's not even on this budget that you want to put out. Your measure A was severely understated previously years. And I look at others and it needs to come up quite high. Probably double two. It is more than enough to pay for what the county has coming out with the fire. More. But you have certain pet things that you guys want to provide the city. We want safety. And you have not listened to us through several meetings. And unfortunately, the recall begins, and I, I apologize that we have to go through that. And I apologize that we get emotional because we all want what's best for this community. But the agenda that you guys have is not on this budget. You have undercut so many things and not shown these council members, how can they even make a decision? If they don't even have actuals. And you know what I'm talking about, Tony, and you need to provide them with that. And the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Lopez.
Good afternoon, council. Um, my name is Frank Lopez. A couple of things real quick. Um, I did want to, uh, maybe ask if there would be a possibility with, um, what's going on with the ICE raids, uh, kind of starting here in the, in the lo- local community. Luckily, there hasn't been any here in town. Uh, I have heard that there was, uh, possibly some. And maybe those, th- those were mis- misinformed. However, uh, because some of the ICE people are coming, uh, on, uh, without their uniforms or coming in, uh, in, in that way, I know that can really scare people and maybe make people evade, uh, wanting not to be snatched or like have a home invasion when you don't know who's just driving up to your house and trying to jump in. So I did see that there was folks, uh, from different law enforcement stating there wasn't a raid. There, there, there was other kind of uh, police, uh, functions going on. And so maybe if, uh, the police can do that in, in this city, if there's ever a, a full-fledged ICE raid here in town. I certainly hope not. I brought this up before in other meetings, so it's not something, uh, that's going on, but it is what's going on in our world. I did also, uh, was at Rotary and wanted to just share and thank the city for also, uh, participating with their scholarships that the, that the, uh, kids received. It wasn't just Rotary scholarship, but it was also city scholarships. Uh, and the other part, uh, the other thing I wanted to ask, but also say is I wanted to thank Mr. Verdugo for having con- tabled the contract at the last meeting. The reason is because, uh, it gave a, a chance for our supervisor, Mr. Valley, to speak, uh, uh, last night's town hall and explain that there is a property contract from the nineties with the city and that they've been taking that money. And as he said, that's their money, apparently. Our property tax money is their money. Uh, which I thought was a little awkward. Um, but I was hoping, Mr. Verdugo, uh, because I know you've always been really focused on keeping our, our fiscal house in order. Um, and I did vote for you, so I'm, I'm, I'm totally, uh, happy with what you've been doing. Um, but I would like to, for you, maybe ask either Mr. Valle or the, the, um, county for a copy of that contract, because it's a thirty-year contract. We don't know what it is in particular. Apparently, Mr. Valle thinks that's his money. But it is the, the, the residents and the homeowners of this town's, uh, money. And so I would, uh, ask you for, uh, to do that, so there's, there's clarification because the, uh, real bill for the fire service this year was one point four million dollars with, with the property tax added into it. That's the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Sheila Verdugo.
Sheila Verdugo, two zero eight South Corcoran Avenue. Little small. Um, so ju- I have a couple of comments from last night's meeting, just, um, to let you know, the translation was not available on Zoom, and so there were several people that were asking if maybe if we did this again, maybe there, there would be translation on Zoom. Yeah, I, I know you. Um, and then there was a young lady that was translating last night, and from, to my understanding, it wasn't the greatest translation, but the young man was really, really good. So I'm just giving you some feedback. And, um, the English speakers, when they got up, to my understanding, they weren't translating to the Spanish speakers what the English speakers were saying. And so I think maybe we should probably make sure that everybody is understanding every side of what's going on, right? Um, and then I just had an idea um, about the, the county proposal, right? It was a three-year contract, I believe, and, and yes, it, it increased. And I wish somebody would do the math for me because I'm not understanding like how much you're saying it's increasing when I'm trying to do the math according to our property taxes that we're told that we're getting about four hundred and seventy-two or something. that we're told that we're getting about four hundred and seventy-two or something property taxes. And then we had four hundred and fifty coming out of the general fund. And then the contract was coming in just right under a million dollars. So it seems like it's more like $250,000 of an increase, not six or eight. Or there's been so many numbers going on, I don't know. I'm not a math girl. You guys all know that. So just if somebody could, at some point, I know you can't do it here, but at some point, make me understand or help me understand where we're getting these numbers at, right? We're getting these double, triple, and I don't know. I'm trying to do the math and it doesn't seem like that much. But and then the last thing would be just an idea of like maybe because it doesn't seem like we're really, really have given this complete thought, right? We started off with wanting a volunteer, then we kinda went to this model two. If we could maybe just sign that contract for the three years, right? Just sign the contract for the three years, keep that county here. But that gives you three years, council, three years to make this right, to completely think it through, find the funding that's gonna, that we can't rely on. And we said this last night, we cannot rely on grant money. We have a building sitting out there that started with grant money, right? And we didn't, we didn't get to complete that with grant money. And it just goes to show you that grants aren't there consistently. We hope that we can find them and we have, I believe, some grant people now that are doing a great job. But it's not, you know, so if we could just sign that three-year contract, give the community peace of mind and then really work on a budget.
Thank you for your comments.
Teresa Pierre.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Pierre, 912 Fremont Street. Obviously, Avenal, California. I've been coming to every single meeting, not by choice, but by fear, by fear that if we are not here, certain people with certain agendas will move forward regardless of how certain people feel. I'm speaking on some things yesterday. I was here missing out on important things in life to be here. Last night, Tony mentioned several times about needs of the community, needs, needs, needs. And it just made me think needs versus wants. We all want things. We all want things for the kids. We all want this, that, and the other. But what we really need is our fire department. We really need you guys to slow down, slow your roll, and come up with something that is acceptable to everybody, not just a certain group, but everybody. And to me and common sense, that is, like Sheila Verdugo mentioned, sign the contract, slow your roll, let's avoid the hiccups. The hiccups, let's see, we had a speaker last night, Ruben Valdez. I just wanna mention, he made a mockery at us about our ambulance service that we had such pride in. We had such pride in our ambulance service, but yet we let that go. We didn't replace our ambulance service with housewives and Band-Aids and bottles of peroxide. My last thing that I want to ask or bring to the table is the fact that the equipment, that those lovely slideshows of the equipment, doing some investigating on that and looking at it. That equipment is marked sale pending. I'm really concerned that we might have missed out on those gems. Or is that sale pending through us? Have we already, you know, made intent? Have we once again put a cart before the horse? Everybody is begging you guys to slow down. Slow down. Stop. Think about what is the safest, best way to move forward? If this is your plan and this is what you are so intent on doing, avoid the hiccups. Do it right. Do you guys really want I told you so's from the entire community? Do you really want more people looking at you as a failure, as an embarrassment, as people that don't know what they're doing? This is our community council. We elected you. So work for us, not yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Ron Moran.
Thank you again for having us. Ron Moran, 801 North Fifth. And just some concerns and some things maybe to think about as a council. I appreciate the council, the mayor and city staff allowing us some time to here to voice our concerns. I was on planning commission several years ago. And what happened in my time there, of course, you're appointed to that position. It's not elected as you city council people are. But it was a group nonetheless that I learned a lot over the years that I was there. I figured I could bring something there with my business expertise of being in business with Avenal lumber for forty-two years. So being on that board, it was during the time that, I'll tell you how far back it was. It was during the time that this theater had burnt down the last time. So there was a decision to be made what to do with the theater afterwards. So what I did was, one of the things I brought up in planning commission I was serving at that time is I said, you know, I started off with, and this wasn't a decision that was made yet, but I started off with, hey, let's tear this thing down. Let's go ahead and haul it all the landfill because at that point in time, there was asbestos in the walls and things. And we were in a period of time where that could all be disposed of very cheap and very easily. Let's make a parking lot down here. Well, what happened was I went out, we didn't make a decision right there and then. I went out and I talked to the citizens of the community. And what they did was they shared with me, no, we need to have a theater. And I listened. I listened to the people of the community. And even though maybe it wasn't the best business decision in the world to be able to keep this because it does cost to turn on the lights and the AC and all those things. You know, I see now standing here in this beautiful Pegasus room that I made the right decision in saying, yes, let's keep the theater because it was the best decision for the people of Avenal. Even though it wasn't my own personal best decision as a business guy, it was the best decision for what Avenal needed. And we're blessed to be able to have this today. Couple other things real quick. We've got a budget of eight hundred thousand plus to be able to run our fire department. In my estimating, in my figures, and I'm not a professional at doing this, I think it's gonna be closer to two million. And what do you base that on? I base that on, I'm hoping that all the city council will go out and do their homework and ask questions. Kalinda's Fire Department, they have their own fire department over there. Their budget is three and a half million dollars a year. And that's why I'm assuming our budget would be probably around two million. I'd also like to say just real quick that the Kings County Fire Department budget, if we do the math on it real quick, for all the Kings County Fire Departments, twenty-one million dollars a year. Divided that by the ten fire stations we have, that's 2.1 million dollars per station. Well, guess what? The county's only asking us for 1.1 million dollars. And boy, that seems like a smoking deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ted Welk.
Ted Welk, hello. I just had a comment about a closed session item. It's 11B on the agenda, personnel government code 54957B. Consider public employee performance evaluation for the position of city manager. And I was, I don't know what that means exactly, but I was looking it up. That agenda item has been on the closed session for every city council meeting since the beginning of January, except for one session, I believe. So I'm just, I'm curious. And again, I know you can't answer here, but I'm thinking it just seems curious that the, considering the performance evaluation of the city manager happens every single closed session for every single council meeting. And I'm just not quite understanding what that is. But I just wanted to point that out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger Wallace.
Okay, so I haven't been speaking this whole time. But last night, there was something said in the town hall meeting about these gentlemen back here not being medically trained. Okay, what you guys need to do is sit back and think. Their fire chief presented a packet, held it up. You seen how thick it was? That's how trained they are. Every one of these guys are medically trained. Take a look, ask them for their profiles. They'll show you how trained they are. They do training every day, whether it be out in the field, on the computer, at home on their days off, or traveling to do training. You guys need to stop and look and quit degrading Kings County Fire and saying that they do not have the training. And for Ruben at the town hall meeting to make a mockery and act the way that he did and thinking that he knows more than them because he has thirty-six years of training or been on the job for thirty-six years. It doesn't matter how long you're on the job because he was an EMT before he became a firefighter. He worked for Avenal District Ambulance as an EMT. These guys, I've seen them work and I've been out there. They are well-trained, more than you're gonna get anybody to start your own fire department.
Thank you for your notes. Daniel Verdusco.
Hello, everyone. I got a couple of comments from last meeting and add a couple more. I agree completely, a hundred percent, and B, option B. I asking, instead of fighting too much, still, I've been asking every single time, getting all together and getting a solution, not fighting. And about the professionals here, I agree, like way over professional, perfect. My job is hazardous waste. I do hazardous, asbestos, lead. My book is like that, too. So in one point, everybody has to be learned, new experience, new people. I agree, I'm operating heavy equipment, too. They talking about the bow like that bulldozer. It's not, it's time and it's little by little. Everything is possible, complete. When I sign the papers, when the people tell me sign because they wanna remove the fire department, I go like, no, we can't do that. I signed it. I said, no, I want the fire department to stay. But nobody explained to me, or a lot of people outside, they say, hey, this is a process. I agree in a process, hundred percent. And I want to sign the contract, but one way to get out. Anytime, three, six months, eight months, I don't care. But just find a solution. We wanna grow in this town or we wanna backwards? We can go back to live in Cameron City, it's got more jobs than here. I can work in Taco Bell and forget about all the hazardous ways and driving so much. They mention like the police department. They say every time somebody show up, it's different. Yes, pero somebody show up. Somebody is there for you. Believe me or not. I don't try to be disrespectful. I don't try to be respectful for nobody. But last night, I totally disagree. A couple persons, really bad words, touching some personal parts by himself. And I wanna that person or give you a warning or don't show up at any other meeting. Because if right now I pass in the middle and say bad words and touch my private, he probably kill me out. I don't wanna see nothing like that again because I got my sign here, it's underage, still, look tall, but still, it's a teenager. This, I agree hundred percent, and it's more talk about it, but it's time's over.
Thank you for your comments.
Jose Arias.
How you guys doing? Good evening. My name's Jose Arias. Avenal resident as well, right? Been here on and off since two thousand nineteen ninety-six, right? Went to school here, graduated from Avenal High School. Came back to this town. I love this little town. Again, you know, I understand that there's a process to this. The, you know, we have, I agree, we should keep the Kings County Fire Department, sign the contract for the three years. But again, like the gentleman said, we should have a way out of that contract. We should have a way to negotiate a price year by year, right? But I also, you know, talking about last night of like measure A, the Avenal General Fund, right? So I understand the frustration of some of the residents on how some of the business has been handled through the city. I get that. I agree, there should be every year, we should have the city be audited. I don't disagree with it. I agree with it. We need that transparency. We need to see that, right? But I also want the citizens of Avenal to understand what some of the presidents are trying to do by doing this recall, right? They're trying to talk about, let's save money, let's, the money for town, the money for this, the money for that. You guys gotta understand that by doing this recall, it's gonna cost the Avenal citizens 175 to 300,000 dollars to hold this recall. I would like to, you know, go with a higher number because let's be realistic. It's not my, it's not gonna be that. But everybody on Facebook keeps posting about doing the recall and I get it, I understand. Hey, if that's what you want, go for it. But let the citizens know of Avenal that it's gonna cost them money and it is gonna come out of the general fund, okay? So don't, don't just be like, oh, yeah, let's, I get it. If you wanna do that, then do it. But let the citizens know, everybody that's signing, what is gonna cost and where is it gonna come from? You know what I mean? Sixty-seven thousand, eighty thousand, that's coming out of the general fund.
Take care of that, please.
So, you know, and so just so you know that that's what the citizens of Avenal should know. So and then one other thing, maybe I didn't have enough time for say this. But again, I would like to bring to the city council, please look into adding additional lighting to the city. That's actually one of the things I wanted to talk about for new business. Please look into that. I know that's also gonna cost money, but it's actually also something we need. And again, let's get the process going, keep the Avenal firefighters, Kings County firefighters. And like Sheila said, hey, we have three years to make a budget, create a budget, create something that explains to the citizens of Avenal what is gonna talk, what is gonna cost to maintain our own fire department.
Mr. Argus, your time is up.
Thank you for your comments.
I would like to ask, please stay in order, please. Well, you don't have to leave. We ask for respect each other. When you guys talk, when you guys talk, nobody interrupted you, nobody. Nobody was having aside conversations. So please respect each other. Those are the rules. Like I mentioned at the beginning, this is a city council meeting to conduct city business with the community. But please do not act like that. We asked you, we gave you a warning. And you don't have to leave. You just abide by the rules. That's all we're asking respectfully. We respect you. When you're talking on the podium, nobody is interrupting you, nobody. I don't see nobody. Yes, please. Yes, yes, that is the protocol. That is the protocol. And I'm sorry, but we have to maintain order. And you guys are recording, so you should know what is happening. Nobody's interrupting people.
John.
Greetings again. My name is John Chamberlain. I am your Kings County Fire Chief. Uh, I was appointed to the position a couple weeks ago, started four days ago. Uh, some familiar faces in the room. Um, some people who did not, were not here last night and didn't get a chance to meet me, so welcome, thank you. And I've been very welcomed. I appreciate that. Everybody's been very hospitable. Um, that being said, um, reference, no disrespect to the dozer operator gentleman. Um, as a type-two safety officer, I've been out on two separate rollovers of seasoned ten-plus-year fire heavy equipment operator dozer rollovers. They literally rolled a piece of equipment over and almost killed themselves. These are people that are trained to do that. They've gone through the academy. Uh, they moved a lot of dirt, side hill, stuff like that. I would implore you then, in the event that you do go down this line, please do not sign that. We will not be participating on active line if that dozer's working with us. I'm gonna tell you that right now. I will stop that deadness tracks. We will not participate. I'm gonna let you know that. Okay, hard and fast. That's a dead stop for me. Um, finally, just real quick, Tuesday during the board of supervisor meeting, uh, there is going to actually be a study session held by the, uh, the board of supervisors. It's going to air out our side of it from the county side. I'm not political, I'm not getting involved in it other than to maybe a contractual
Anybody online with you?
Steve Hembry.
Good evening, council. I'm Steve Hembry. I lived in Avenel all my life. I just have a question. Um, uh, American ambulance has an exclusive contract for Kings County, I believe Fresno too. If Kings County Fire were to ever leave Avenel, would AMR leave also? Because they're not supporting here, they would go to Kettleman City possibly to support Station Nine? It was just an idea and thought, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We can that answer?
One, one plausencia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, or afternoon. I came to this country because my parents brought me here. I'm gonna tell you about my history. I came here since nineteen ninety-eight.
Can you please
I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight. I've been here since nineteen eighty-eight. Okay? And the only reason I remember the years is because I came here two years before Halloween. All right? My parents got legalized, I became legalized, I joined, I joined the United States Marine Corps. And please refrain myself from cursing because this is the Marine Corps way. But I came back to my town and it pains me that I, we see this every day. What is, I'm gonna ask you guys a question. What is a first responder to you guys? Do you live here, sir? This town?
Yes, I do. We all must live here.
So mostly everybody lives here, right? It's pretty upsetting that since I've been here, a lot of things happen in this town that they don't take care of the people. Sports programs, now the fire department. What is gonna be next? The police department? I'm gonna tell you guys something. I lived in Limor. Two twenty-six East Hazelwood Apartments. It made national news. My neighbors, my neighbors died, a young couple and their three children. I knew them personally because of their parents. What ticked me off is that for some reason the Limor Fire Department couldn't get the call. Hanford Avenue, Kettleman City, Military Fire Department answered to that call. So what is it gonna take for you guys to get your act together? And come to a solution for the fire department? And any other programs that you guys have? It angers me because there's rumors about everybody in the city council. I could careless about that? But you guys need to come to a solution to fix this problem or any problem that we have in this town. It's unacceptable, ladies and gentlemen. You're here to make the town better, not make it worse. I hope it's none of your relatives that for some reason there's a fire, they die. I've been in situations that I don't wanna remember. And I'm just telling you, every single member, I known him since high school. He graduated a year behind me. Now he has a business. So are you guys gonna act when his business burns and now get a fire department or any of you guys? You guys need to appreciate what this town means. Okay, to finalize, you guys come with better solutions, better programs.
Thank you for your comments and thank you for your service.
That's all the comments.
Do we have any line?
Veronica Giri.
Um, good evening, council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we do. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my name is Veronica Giri, four twenty North A Avenue, longtime resident of the community of Avenel. Um, I, I had some things I wanted to point out, but I just wanna address this one first. Um, the new little sentence that you guys added in the, um, number three on the agenda, where council asks you to keep your comments concise and positive. And let's see what else, creative criticism presented with appropriate courtesy is welcome. So are, are you, are you now oppressing our read, our freedom of speech by trying to control the dialogue of people wanting to come and exercise their concerns? I, I find that very concerning because as long as anybody isn't using found language, nobody is trying to attack you or touch you or do anything like that, you should be able to freely express your concerns. That is the whole reason for public participation. And also, again, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to be able to participate per Zoom. I work out of town, I don't make it in time. It's not that I don't wanna be there in person. It's just I don't have the ability to be there in person at this time, so I do value that. But I did recognize that the last few times that you've had Zoom meetings, not just in council, but the two, um, the two public forums, or what do you guys call them, town halls? Um, they didn't, they didn't address anybody on the Zooms. There was nobody there moderating and I feel like that's oppressing our, our right to be able to participate publicly. And I really feel that that undermines the principles of the open government and equal access. And, um, so, and also I believe that the community needs to be fully informed of the extra revenue generated by that thousand tons uh per day of waste coming from the close to Keita Canyon landfill. That's a significant increase and it means significant added revenue. I believe that the public has the right to know because that should be allocated towards our public safety. And lastly, I'm just gonna say, I'm troubled by the actions of several certain council members who instead of listening with an open mind, have gone out into public spaces to actively persuade community members to support measures that many do not feel comfortable with. That's not leadership, that's advocacy with an agenda, advocacy with an agenda. It undermines trust. Any council member who cannot remain neutral and who is actively working to influence public opinion outside the council chambers should recuse themselves from voting of those measures. The role is to listen and represent the community, not pressure it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we don't have any more? Then we'll, no, at this time we'll close public comment and continue with the meeting. I just would like to direct staff to please, uh, if possible, to answer those questions directly. The ones that were asked and that way, you know, we don't violate any runoff. That are we going to, uh, item number four, which is consider calendar. And we have for a, it is to consider the city of Avenel successor agency approval minutes for line for June twelve, twenty twenty-five, which was the special meeting and also the regular meeting. There any question, comments? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent calendar? We have a motion by Mayor Pro team Gomez, is there a second? So we have a motion by council member Gomez to approve the concerned calendar minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second by council member Hernandez, Angie Roco, please.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilman Vergigo?
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor team, Mayor Pro team Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Preciado?
Yes. For the record, it passed five oh. So we'll go into item number five and we have none. That is mayor and council member and, uh, item for consideration. So we'll move over into item number six and that is activity reports, special presentations and also committed reports. The very first one, it is our police department activity report by Cecilio Velasco, chief of police.
Good evening, honorable council, mayor, city manager, madam clerks and great members of the public here today. In regards to leadership and stability, Commander Edward Ridge continues to demonstrate leadership and initiative. He's actively supported coordination efforts with allied agencies and has contributed meaningfully to the staff and development. He helped coordinate a couple of operations we've had that the public may have become aware uh, this past, uh, actually yesterday and, uh, the last couple of weeks regarding some shootings that we had in town. Obviously don't wanna discuss the case too much right now, just to maintain the integrity of the cases, but, uh, it's, it's our, part of our operations to try to resolve those cases and, uh, bring them to a resolution. I completed the post-executive development course, uh, this past couple of weeks. Uh, was the final session of that, uh, that course required by post for, uh, chiefs of police and, um, the department continues to uphold high expectations across all ranks promoting accountability and professional conduct. Department leadership collaborated to develop a projected departmental budget for the coming fiscal year and that was submitted to, uh, our, uh, finance department. Internal scouting is underway to fill the remaining sergeant and corporal positions to strengthen supervisory capacity. Recruitment remains ongoing for police officer one and two. Officer Mendez, Martinez and Lopez, uh, who are funded actually by COPS grants, uh, that we successfully obtained, uh, completed their field training program and are now operating as solo officers. Officer Christopher Drake is progressing steadily through his field training phase. And he's currently, uh, in phase one, preparing to transition to phase two. And today, uh, several of them were receiving, uh, TASER training. The department will have two full-time officers assigned as detectives beginning next week who will work closely with our property and evidence technician to support complex investigations and evidence processing. As you're well aware, that was our plan as soon as these three officers, uh, were off of FTL. Officers and community service units, uh, members participated in a variety of outreach efforts including rotary, Reef Sunset Middle School graduation and an elder abuse and harassment prevention presentation at the senior center. The department is preparing for upcoming community engagement event on July first from six to eight P M. To, uh, tag along with the cruise night, uh, over at the theater with our, uh, COPS kids and ice cream, uh, the event where we provide, uh, children with the ice cream to, uh, better engage with them to ensure that we create trust and legitimacy with them. Recruitment for the Avenel Police Explorer Programs remains ongoing with efforts to broaden the youth engagement. We, as I mentioned in the past, we already had our first, uh, recruitment session uh, after meeting with the Boy Scouts of America to re-establish our explorers post. And, uh, we already have received several applications, are in the process of, of getting that program, uh, going. The Burn Skip Grant Campaign is now officially launched, uh, with the programming focused on community wellness, education and intervention awareness. That was a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar grant that we received, uh, for not only the staffing required to, uh, complete that grant, uh, the, uh, the campaign, but also, uh, for a brand-new, uh, police unit, uh, vehicle to engage with the, with that campaign. The department continues to experience a downward trend in crime rates. Uh, although we've had some shootings, I will say that, uh, in comparison to, to the county, uh, our part-one crimes are actually a lot lower and continue to decrease. Two major incidents this month, we're thoroughly investigating, remain open. And those are the shootings I'm speaking of, although we've, we've made an arrest in one of the cases. Uh, you know, obviously, uh, the investigation's not closed, it's always ongoing. And we ask any members of the public that if they have additional information, please contact us at the police department. Two coordinated operations were conducted, one collaboration with the Kings County Sheriff's Office SWAT team due to a high-threat, uh, assessment. And, uh, so we're still demonstrating that, uh, there's still strong inter-agency support. The flock safety camera installation is about twenty percent complete and that's another project that's paid by COPS grants that we receive yearly. We are currently, uh, awaiting the necessary CAL trans permits to proceed with full deployment. Uh, my understanding is we have several cameras already in place. Uh, as you're well aware, the strategy was to surround the city, uh, entrance and exits with those cameras uh, to ensure that we, uh, capture, uh, any potential information that will lead us to, uh, suspects in any type of, uh, criminal activity that are either coming into the city and also exiting the ci- the city, uh, during those crimes. The department has implemented its momentum policing model with the addition of detectives and new investigative technology designed to support proactive crime reduction strategies. We continue to foster a supportive and communicative work environment that prioritizes employee wellness and morale. As I mentioned in the past, that I believe that if the, if we focus on wellness, then that's the type of service we get when they engage with the community. It translates to the community. Officers and staff are encouraged to participate in community events as part of a healthy work-life balance. Leadership maintains regular check-ins with team members to promote wellness, inspire innovation and sustain a mission-driven culture. On, uh, on the very last page, uh, you'll see the data for twenty twenty-five. In finishing off the month of May, we had eight hundred and seventy-three total calls for service. Four hundred and fifty-six of those were proactive, uh, calls for, uh, officer-initiated activity. And we had a total of thirteen citations, four traffic collisions and twenty-eight arrests, which is on par with what we've been averaging for the, the warmer weather months. June, in June, uh, from the time of, from June first to when the time this report was, uh, completed. So far, we have six hundred and two calls for service and we have two hundred and eighty-nine officer-initiated, uh, activities on those calls for service. Thirty citations and traffic, two traffic collisions so far and eighteen arrests. And that is my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council to the chief about his report? Go ahead.
Uh, is there a number of explorers that we have, uh, signed in already?
Right now, we have currently three applications
Three applications.
From our first, uh, uh, meeting and we plan on having more. Well, the delay was, we wanted to make sure, um, other programs have had explorer programs without the assistance from the Boy Scouts of America, but the Boy Scouts of America- without the assistance from the Boy Scouts of America, but the Boy Scouts of America offers some liability insurance along with their membership, so we want to, we want to make sure that we are covered in that aspect. And it also offers a, an actual explorer post with the exploring program. So, but we do have three applicants so far, and we're still continuing our recruitment efforts.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple.
Yes, sir.
So your budget, and you know, you're going on the second year as a police chief here in Avonel. And I noticed that your budget actually is coming down from last year to this year, and that's probably because of you personally being able to apply for grants at the state and federal level. And just for transparency, that is something that we're not able to do when we have the deputy sheriffs here, right?
To my, to my understanding, I can't, I, for, I'm not aware if they did write grants or not, and if the city received those at that time. But I do know that I was pretty aggressive when I first came, my first year here, I wrote seven grants, and we were able to obtain four of those, I believe. A few were not as large as the other ones, but in my opinion, our strategy has been that any funds that relieve money from the general fund is always helpful. And I mean, it's always been in every department I've worked for. And this year, we also authored a grant, and we actually, you know, I didn't put it on my report, but we, just because we got the email kind of late, but on June 24th, we were informed, well, previous to that, we were informed that we were awarded a CHP grant for $146,000 that was going to pay for DUI suppression, and it was also going to pay for a brand new police car, fully equipped. And so, you know, it's, it's helpful to get grants. I know that I heard a statement earlier that, you know, we can't really rely on grants. I think maybe, because I'm not too familiar with building facilities, you know, because I know that the cost fluctuates, but as far as for police work, it always helps us, and they are reliable, we're drawing those funds. I believe I complete those report, I manage those grants by completing the reports and drawing the funds into the city accounts. So I mean, and it's pretty consistent. It is paying for the salary of, the salary of two full-time police officers and about 50% shared costs for three police officers. So I believe that that relieves a little bit of the budget.
Okay. The second question is regarding, I know there's a lot of fear in surrounding communities. I believe there was some, I don't know for sure, if it was ICE or raids in Huron this morning, but I know for a fact that our community also saw SWAT team trucks here in Avonel, but that wasn't in relation to any ICE or Border Patrol raids. Can you kind of tell us the difference? And if you know anything about the Huron incident? Because I have received a lot of phone calls from concerned Avonel residents about the situation.
Yeah.
So happening surrounding our communities.
Yeah, yesterday, yesterday I was checking, obviously, it's part of my job to monitor social media, you know, and to see, and to gauge the temperature of the community. And, you know, in ensuring that this operation went smoothly and that it didn't raise any of those alarms, I already had a, I obviously can't communicate what we're doing for officer safety purposes immediately to the city manager. However, you know, I have something prepared right at the moment, once we started the operation, to immediately notify him so he can notify you folks, so that way, when you get inquiries, you can, you know, let those people know that it's a police operation and not an ICE operation. I think I've made efforts to try to speak to the migrant community on many occasions to educate them on the SB 54, you know, on how law enforcement can't cooperate in, in any civil immigration policies, but we can assist only when it's a serious criminal matter. But no, to answer that, I, I think we did our due diligence in ensuring that we, we gauged the community to see if there was any panic over that, because that was one of my concerns, and I was getting ready to put a press release if that was the case, but I think we were able to mitigate that by immediately notifying the city manager, and then he obviously notified you folks.
Yeah.
And I think that was enough. And this morning, I was made aware early in the morning as well about the concerns in Huron, and I think we were able to get an answer right away. And so we learned that it was an actual police operation and not ICE. But, but to my knowledge, you know, the community so far, you know, hasn't been affected by, by that recently.
Sure.
Five? For five? Not, not anytime soon. Yes, yes, yes.
You're welcome. The last question, chief, I noticed in the last two years, we have had a lot of accidents and traffic collisions, and even though they've been going down, but still the numbers are concerning in our small community. And some of that happened, you know, in the, in the early mornings of, in the early hours of the day. So are you planning, or will it be possible to have a, a, I don't know, a class or maybe talk with the AA club here in Avonel with the Sidro Martinez, and maybe kind of have a class collaborating about how we can reduce these traffic collisions and, you know, DUIs and, you know, like, I'm, the numbers are concerning for a small city.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we always look at the traffic collisions and try to assess what the primary collision factors are, and then we try to, you know, look for those type of violations that are causing those collisions. Obviously, there is a concern with DUIs. Part of, well, this grant that we've just recently received was for DUI enforcement, where we can pay officers overtime to come out and do special, you know, saturation details, looking for DUI drivers, so that way, we can lower the collisions or lower the DUIs that we're, we're, as a deterrent, you know, we're going to have some checkpoints and some saturation details. Yes, but we're always open to collaborating with, with any organization or any person in order to educate the community in regards to, you know, prevent accident prevention and things of that nature, absolutely.
Yeah, I believe DUI checkpoints are good, but sometimes they're going to affect people kind of late, so I would like to see some preventive programs that will help our community to understand and abide by the law and, and, you know, do not drive when they're drinking or, you know, under the influence, but just trying to kind of be positive on, on that situation.
Yes. And just to touch on the resident's statement again, ma'am, although those grants expire, they're always grants available, we just have to go out and get them. But to your point, yes, thank you. Yes. Well, I've, I've been fortunate then. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for your report, and we'll go to the next item on the agenda. And that is a community development activity report, and I believe we have Josh, Joshua?
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, members of the public and city council members. My name is Tessa Ramirez. I am with city planning staff. The following is a brief summary of our planning and zoning work conducted by our firm for the city of Avonel over the past month. Some of our general items are responding to miscellaneous public and staff inquiries, which includes planning and any zoning issues, as well as the processing of the Open Gov Task, reviewing business license, as well as building permits, as well as address assignments. And we've completed and reviewed several of them, as well as certificate of occupancy permits, again, business licenses. We've responded to and reviewed any inquiries for proposed projects by the public. And on current planning, we do have the Fresno and Kings County boundary change and Avonel annexation, but we will continue to coordinate and discuss with all staff. For our long-range items, we have the housing element for our annual progress report, standard reporting from required by the state annually, as well as coordinating with Kings County on the multi-jurid, jurid, this, I'm sorry, jurisdictional housing element. And that concludes my report. Are there any comments or questions?
Any comments or questions? Go ahead.
To the current planning here, Fresno County boundary changes, annexation, how, how is that going? I know we started this quite, quite a while ago, so how's that going?
Um, my colleague Josh McDonald has been in the talks with it, with, I believe, Anthony, but as of right now, it's on hold. We still have a lot to discuss and to coordinate on with that. That's pretty much it for now.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go into item number three, and that is economic development and also grant writer report, and we have Emily Engelska online, so she, from Chris Com company. Go ahead, Emily.
Yes, good, good evening, council members, mayor. So happy to be here this evening to give our report. For the legislative update, the California State Legislature is actively moving through the 2025 legislative session. We're working, they're working towards finalizing bills and the state budget ahead of its scheduled adjournment in mid-September. The recently enacted 2025, 2026 budget totals $325 billion and reflects the state's continued investment in four priorities, including housing, homelessness, education, and public safety. Key provisions include $500 million for homelessness response programs, $500 million in tax incentives to spur affordable housing development, and $300 million to support first-time home buyers. Additional targeted funding has been directed to teacher training, support for wildfire-affected school districts, and various public safety measures. At the same time, numerous policy proposals are advancing through committee hearings with notable attention given to bills related to digital equity, college affordability, workforce analytics, and employment standards. On, on the federal side, Congress remains in session and is working on legislation concerning infrastructure, climate resilience, and appropriations, all of which hold implications for local government. While no single piece of federal legislation is currently capturing headlines, programs like the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Initiative continue to present potential funding pathways for cities like Avonel. We are continuing to engage closely with Congressman Valadeo's office to advocate for full federal funding of the $4 million Avonel Water Reliability Project. Our goal is to ensure that this critical infrastructure project is completed and receives the necessary support through the fiscal year 2026 federal appropriations process. On the state level, we maintain regular contact with our legislative representatives and their staff to ensure that Avonel's projects are at the forefront should any discretionary funds become available. As part of our ongoing effort to keep city leadership informed, we produce a bi-weekly update called Sacramento Snapshot, which highlights key developments in the state legislation relevant to city. Anthony is currently on the distribution list and receiving these updates. If any members of the city council would like to be added to this list and have, and receive regular briefings, we would be happy to include them, just let us know who. And we'll be sure to keep everyone informed on the latest activity from Sacramento. For our economic development update, our team continues to actively promote Avonel as a prime destination for new business development. We are prioritizing outreach, outreach to retail and restaurant operators with a particular focus on franchise-based businesses. By working directly with franchise development directors, we introduce them to Avonel's growing market potential and highlight the benefits of investing in our community. Attracting well-known corporate businesses offers multiple advantages. These establishments not only create local employment opportunities, but also draw customers from surrounding areas, increasing foot traffic and overall economic activity. As a result, the city sees increased sales task revenue, which strengthens the general fund and supports essential services and infrastructure projects. Additionally, many of the franchises we are targeting offer opportunities for local entrepreneurs to become business owners. This approach enables Avonel residents to participate directly in economic growth, keeping more profits within the community. Importantly, the presence of national brands does not detract from the value of our small independent businesses. Increased traffic and visibility often benefit local establishments. Our long-term goal is to cultivate a balanced and thriving economic ecosystem, one where national chains, franchises, and locally-owned businesses can coexist and succeed together. Our team has been following up with the numerous representatives we've engaged with at ICSC in Las Vegas last month, including, but not limited to Popeyes, Chick-fil-A, Raising Canes, Slim Chickens, and Bojangles, as well as Wendy's, Jack in the Box, McDonald's, Burlington, TJ Maxx, and so many more. Since many of these venues are franchises, we are also updating our community outreach flyer to solicit new franchisees for the city of Avonel. For our grant writing update, a representative from the Chris Comm team does attend bi-weekly staff meetings to assist with grant administration and to ensure all departments are aware of relevant funding opportunities for their respective projects. We remain committed to identifying and pursuing grant programs that align with the city's goals for infrastructure, safety, recreation, and community development. A few upcoming grant deadlines that might be of interest to the city are the Land and Water Conservation Fund due August 5th, and the California Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant due August 18th. Thank you so much for letting me come and give our report this evening. I welcome any questions from the council.
Any question from council? I have a question regarding the Caltrans grants. Our state highways, State Highway 33 and also State Highway 269, which includes Skyline Boulevard, have been deteriorating. It's about time that, you know, they do some work on them, especially up in the hills coming down. I was told by Caltrans that they don't have any projects for State Highway 269, that they actually do projects every 10 years. Is there any way possible through Chris Comm that we can push them to actually come and do projects in these two highways before every 10 years, had they have it stipulated on their agenda?
And these are owned, Caltrans-owned roads?
Yes, they are.
We can certainly reach out to Caltrans and see if we can work with them and, and see if we can kind of negotiate them to, you know, do some additional work on those roads. I know how important those are for the city, and I know they've been doing work on other roads near the city, so we can certainly put it on our radar and reach out to any contacts we have with Caltrans.
It's, it's State, State Highway 269 is a major concern because actually, it runs through the middle of our town, and we're not able to do any repairs.
Right, exactly. I'll definitely put that on our radar and have John with our office see if he has any contacts with Caltrans, as well as Chuck.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No other questions? No, I don't see any. Thank you for your report. With that, we'll move over into the next one. Which is uh item six B, which is presentation reports. We have none. Item number seven, it is public hearings and we do have a. Uh to consider a proposed city of Avenel fiscal year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. City budget and fees and charges, uh and we, we're gonna have a staff report before we go into public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, uh council members. Uh just for the record, my name is Griselda Price. I'm the Director of Administrative Services. And staff today is um bringing to council the, the proposal of of oper- of adopting an operating budget. Right now, staff is currently working on reconciling some of the grants as well as some of the revenues and expenditures. Um in November, we implemented the new utility billing suite that is part of our financing program. So we are obviously constantly checking to see that the data being entered into that software is being translated correctly into the finance. So that's been part, partial the delay of having the final budget. The um we are, obviously, we're also reconciling grants and making sure that all of the reimbursements um have been made. And also double checking to see that the reimbursements that have been requested have been received. Um we are also working on finalizing some of the numbers for personnel. We are working on the very last payroll of the fiscal year. So when, once we have that information and we've reconciled, um we're looking at to hopefully having that information done in the next two weeks. Which during that time, we will also be working with department heads just to go over their proposed budget. With the inc- with the increase of the fire safety um budget increasing, we're obviously looking at. Where we can have some savings. So that is why we're also going to be meeting with some of our. Um department heads to go over their budget to see where we, we can find some of those cost savings. To make sure that we are able to cover the cost for the fire. As well, um we will also like to start meeting with council and doing all of the um, just reviewing the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And working uh into adopting the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So yes, um so that's basically been part, not of the delay, we're just being very meticulous with our numbers and making sure that we have all the data correct. Before we presented. So with recommendation from staff, we would like to recommend that we adopt an operating budget. For the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Are there any question before we're going to, hold on, before we go, before we're going to public hearings? From council, not the public. Is it the staff report? Any questions about the staff report from council?
Um Sheila, just a minute.
Yeah, once it goes into public hearing, but I did want to add just one quick thing, Mister, Mister Mayor. Uh before you pass it on to council. Yeah, so this um operating budget, it's not, we've done it before. In the past two years, we've had to start with an operating budget, one because of the reconciling with the old software. We do have everything on open gov now. Um I do have here, I know, got a request from Councilman Verdugo of seeing our current numbers. This is up to me. We'd like to prevent that final numbers and that's what Griselda was mentioning in about two weeks. We should have final numbers to present on all the actual expenses. We'll have revenues as well. What this does have though is kind of the proposed budgets. Hasn't been vetted. I have not had a chance to meet with all department heads. And really go through what the requests are. This is kind of their wish list. So as it is, um I would have copies for council. Just so then we can have scheduling the um budget hearings with council in the next few weeks. This is just to meet the state obligation of having a budget. This operating budget, as like I mentioned, the same as last two years. Just to meet payroll, it's just to meet the uh day-to-day expenses, does not include any major projects, any major purchases. It's just to be able to continue on and we would hope and expect, given that the software is actually pretty intuitive. We should be able to get something within a month or less. Depends how many uh budget hearings we have and how quickly we can kind of close the gap. Because at least in the proposed budget, we have about a one point four million deficit. A lot of things that we can kind of change, move around. There's still some revenues that need to be reviewed. So just so council's aware.
Yes, uh we also have to consider uh negotiations with the bargaining units that will be happening tonight in closed session. So um that's why the budget is not finalized. It is customary for cities to adopt a uh operating budget. Until the final budget is adopted and I believe we have until October, November to have the final budget.
Anytime, as long as there's some budget of the city.
But there is also deadline according to state law.
That's just for your review. Again, they're not final, final numbers, but it is a proposed for the next fiscal with some of the current expenditures. Up to me.
We're, we're gonna move into that uh section next. We're still on a uh staff report. And if council has questions about the staff report, then we'll move into public hearing. Then that's when the public can actually ask questions.
So I don't have enough copies. I can post it on the website.
Can take one of these. So Nick, any uh questions regarding the staff report?
Well, considering that I did ask for this today, earlier today and to be able to make a sound decision of this. And this, uh I think, in my opinion, I think we need to, even though when it says here that we need to do it before June thirtieth. At least to the next uh city council meeting in July, so we could go, so I could go over this myself. And maybe ask even more questions. What's, you know, questions?
It's not intended as a final budget.
Yeah, but still, I just got, you know, even though I asked for this today, I can make a sound decision and. This and this without looking, comparing apples to apples.
Well, what, yeah, I understand, but what we're boiling on tonight is just for the operating budget. That budget has to be adopted by June thirtieth before the next fiscal year that begins in July first. So the next council meeting will be July tenth. It'll be too late to adopt an operating budget. Without, without an operated budget, the city cannot pay payroll. Cannot buy any equipment that they need, cannot operate. So, so that's the intention of this operating budget. And, and, and it was taught to the public why, what is the situation regarding adopting a full budget? As you're aware, the Kings County Fire Department is still on negotiations. Uh all five uh negotiation uh personnel units are under negotiation right now. They're asking for. Increases. So all of this is gonna be discussed tonight. We cannot discuss city business outside of uh city council meetings. So that's why it's important to do it today. So we're not adopting the uh full budget.
Right, and as, as been noted, and it's, these are the same resolutions and same kind of information. In event that there is not a full budget, you know, our resolution to consider and adopt order to meet the payroll, payroll and operating expenses until the final budget is approved. So what's been done the past two, two years? And I believe even before.
So any other discussion from council? So we can move on to the, to the next line on the agenda? So now I will open a public hearing. Any person who may like to uh comment on this uh item. Can come to the podium. Please come to the podium. It's right there, they have it.
Need to come to the podium.
That's a, I am following the rules, sir. I'm not being aggressive. So I'm just asking like one of what you said, how come we can't see a report after what you guys discuss? On the budget, of the proposed budget. Is balance, is balances, right?
So it's not finalized?
Understand it. I'm just trying to understand it.
So I'm letting council know that with a lot of other projects and town halls we've had, we've not been able to finish the budget. Haven't met with department heads on what their proposed budgets are.
As taxpayers, I think we all have a right to see results. Because we all depend on each other. Your, your payroll, you mentioned something about payroll. Well, we pay taxes. It is your guys' job to, to figure the numbers, right? You're trying to figure out the numbers to keep our fire department, our police department. I'm gonna mention something that is probably gonna backfire on me, but we really didn't need another park. Behind the boxing gym. It was not necessary. If it was, you guys could have put those on Rice Park. Make it better. Like I mentioned before, a lot of us grew up in this town, a lot of us live in this town. We have to live here. Whoever doesn't live here, they don't have to live here. A while back ago, I applied, give me one more moment, please. A while back, uh about a couple of years ago, I applied for a job in the city. I wasn't even called for the interview until I mentioned to a city worker, hey, you guys discriminate against veterans? If you guys do that to veterans, how come you guys do that to the community? Is it a connection? If you don't know, you have to know somebody? After I made a comment, I got a call. I went for the interview. They asked me a question regarding hazmat. I don't see a hazmat disposal in this town. We have the city dump. Every time the wind kicks that way, I have to smell that. There's the income coming of that. There's numbers coming through that. When we dump our trash, we get charged.
We appreciate you.
It's gotta be Monday.
We, we appreciate your comments, but right now. We're discussing. And you're, you're going out of the uh.
I got a minute now, sir. You're cutting my time.
They, you should not probably comment for three minutes, Angie.
I see a block there.
Right, well, 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 please, it's.
So is your job?
Stay with the, the item on the agenda.
When I refer to what I asked you earlier, what are first responders to you guys? Nobody answered that question.
During public comments, we're not allowed by Stella to answer any question that are not on the agenda. She read it at the beginning of the meeting. Would you please read it again, Angie? Would you please read it again, Angie, so he understands? He's gonna read it to you.
Let it be talked. This is my time to talk.
Just, just read it, Angie, please.
No, don't bother, please. Don't bother. Don't, don't bother, please. You're not being.
Okay.
Let me rephrase that. You're not doing what you're supposed to do for the charity. That, that's all.
So I hope you understand, right now is public hearing regarding the budget. Not parks, not any other. We're, we're moving away from the agenda. Okay, well, go ahead.
State your name, please.
Ginger Wallace. So again, my question is, how can you move forward with approving this operation budget? With less than twenty-four hours, without any of these council members being able to look what you just now presented them with because it was asked for. We came in last council meeting for a budget, a contract sign-in budget. Because it was less than twenty-four hours, the lawyer hadn't had a time to look at it. We couldn't move forward with it. So as a community member, I ask you not to move forward with this budget. You guys gotta give these members, the council members, enough time to look at it. You're presenting this one now.
This is for the full budget that we're not boiling on tonight. Okay, we're gonna still continue on the full budget. This one is not gonna be adapted tonight. This one, they receive, every single one of them receive this one.
Okay.
Okay, and this is the one we're gonna top, this one.
But in the keynote that Anthony had stated, we need this adapted tonight and approved tonight. So you guys can move forward with buying equipment. Thank you.
Wastewater Water Treatment Plant, there's, there's a equipment here repairs for wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, time out.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for opening up the hearing. Uh the council was handed these sheets, which are expenditures. If you're writing out a check, don't you look at the balance of your checking book? You do? Then why didn't any of you guys ask him for that information? When is the budget due? When does it do? June thirtieth? Has that changed in the last twenty years?
This is not the first time that the city.
My time, my time.
You're asking questions, right?
Okay, go on.
This is not the first time that, that any city has been adopted an operated budget. In Avenel is not the only city. Colinga, Huron, Fresno.
Avenel. I don't care about any of the other cities. We're, we're in trouble here. For one thing, you still haven't put the revenue. You still haven't, how can you guys even discuss this? You still haven't put what the city has been receiving in revenue. That's money in. Who's, who's, who controls that?
Finance Department.
The finance department?
And she just presented it.
Grisella, can you tell me what the, what the current revenue is? Thank you very much. This is a joke.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
If you guys vote for this, I, I get, I don't want to cause anybody payroll, but you got, you got a lot of questions for this guy.
Sheila Verdugo, two zero eight South Corcoran Avenue. Couple of questions, just first of all, just when did you first receive the budget sheets, right? When did your department heads first receive these budget, the budget sheets? So the, the question is, when they receive it, how long have you been working on a budget, right? That's probably the first question is, how long has this budget been, being worked on? Anthony, I guess. How much earlier this month, like a date, like, you know what I mean?
Please, no side conversation.
So, and typically, how long does it take to put a budget together with your department heads? When you sit down with your department heads, and I'm assuming you're doing that correctly, correct, right? You were giving them their budgets, they're doing their budgets on their own. Because I know when I was there, sweetheart, I, I did not do my budget. You did my budget. I've never. So I'm just saying, is the department heads now doing their budgets on their own? And how many meetings have you had with those department heads to date? To go over that, because council normally sits down. How many, how many meetings have you had with your department heads? To date since June ninth, right, June ninth? How many times have you each met? You should be meeting with your department heads. They should be going over their budgets with each of you. You need to ask them questions, what they need, why they need it, where the money, why this line item. You, you're supposed to be asking those questions. Have you had a meeting? Mister Reynoso, have you had a meeting with the department heads to date?
And that's the exact reason why.
I wanna go around, Mister Verdugo, have you had a meeting with these department? I want to go around. Mr. Verdugo, have you had a meeting with these department heads? Which have been working on their budget, I'm assuming since June ninth? Mr. Hernandez, have you met with any department heads over this budget? No. Can I get a verbal? Ms. Ms. Gamas, have you? Mayor Presiado, have you? No, I don't need anything else. I just need a yes or no.
I'm not gonna.
That is that is concerning. That is concerning. No, don't argue with me.
I'm not arguing.
I just asked you a simple, I just a yes or no. Other than that, it's my time still. Okay? So I'm just saying, you should have already been sitting down, having these discussions with the city manager and your department heads. And if you haven't, shame on you. Well, first of all, he took up my time. He took up my time. I'm just saying, be thoughtful in what you're supposed to be doing. Be asking these questions. You're not asking any questions. You're just getting the information and and going along with it. It is not appropriate and you're not doing your jobs.
Thank you. So we need to get to clarify this. Mrs. Let me please uh uh clarify that what's an operated budget is.
Just. I'm just making clear that in the event that the fiscal. Oh, sorry, in the event that the that the. In the event that the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget is not adopted by June thirtieth to the two thousand twenty-five. Then these following resolutions will need to be considered and adopted in order to meet the payroll operating expenses. Until a final budget is considered and approved, so.
So there's still time, and Sheila, you're right. Council needs to have budget hearings. That was mentioned by finance that we'd like to schedule those. The idea is, there does need to be a budget approved. As an operating budget doesn't mean it's finalizing anything. It's not approving any special projects, any other equipment. It's just to meet the day-to-day expenses and payroll. This is the same budget that's been presented in the past to council. As an operating budget, just to kind of meet what we need. And I don't anticipate going farther than maybe a month.
So why is that? Why do you have something already? If nothing people have, um, a company in place in the city here to. No, I mean, no, then they're not even posted, well, we're being two weeks. First, first off, two weeks, still two weeks out, you know? I don't know.
So it seems that there's a lot of misunderstanding on the item. Uh, when I was working in Colinga for twenty-seven years, the city of Colinga adopted many, many operating budgets. Any city has the right to do it when they're not ready to adopt a final, a final. Budget for the next fiscal year. So you 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 need to understand that if if this is not approved by June thirtieth, the city cannot operate. Will not be able to buy anything, will not be able to pay city employees, will not be able to run as a city. And this is legal to adopt an operative budget is legal in the state of California. It is legal and also and also for and and I'll let you talk, so now let me talk, please don't interrupt me. And what you just said is not set in stone that that we need to meet personally with every department head. That goes according to to staff. You know, there's many ways to adapt a budget. There's many meetings that can be with council and staff and department heads. But not necessarily we need to meet with them on a one-on-one. If and 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 if that was the 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 practice before. When you were working, uh, and and also would like to say that, uh. You know, things, things are changing because we need to, uh, right now dealing with a lot of projects in the middle. We're negotiating with all five bargaining units. We're gonna be negotiating that tonight. It'll be the very first meeting with them about their ass. And it's not gonna be set in stone. We may have two or three meetings before we agree into a contract with them. All five departments. And it that we're talking about the budget for the next fiscal year. The next fiscal year, so that's why, that's why we need to adopt an operative budget, not a final budget. So with that, are there any other?
I need clarification. Councilmember Verdugo, do you have a motion on the table?
I'd like to motion that we table this the next meeting. I mean, we just got this. I mean. All this, all this shows is this money that's gonna go out. It doesn't show what we actually, well, now now we know what we actually have. And I think this is something that should have been in the packet before anything else, so I move that we table it to the next meeting, but.
So let's see, let let me tell you, you did receive this one a few days ago. Okay, this is what we're voting on, not this one.
Yeah, but it would.
This one is for the final budget. This one is for the final budget. We're not adopting the final budget.
It would be nice to know. What you have in 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 your checkbook to to say, okay, we have money there to operate this, operating money.
We we will have to then call for a special meeting on June thirtieth, so you have time to read the blue sheet that they gave you the package. And then we will have a Dennis, again, uh, we will have a special meeting on June thirtieth, so we meet our uh obligations. Because we cannot go past June thirtieth, June thirtieth before passing an operated budget.
Then we have to.
You wanna.
That we do we and then if we have to come back before that day, then we have to come back before that day.
So so we have, I I would like to make sure, uh, make a motion on the table that we can vote on an operative budget tonight. That would be a motion and a second motion will be by council member Verdugo to table the whole item. And the city will be on on default of meeting their obligations.
So we can be before the the thirtieth. That's what I said.
Well, I would like to see if council. Second, your motion or my motion.
Okay, so there's there are two motions on the table. So please, let's let's be in an orderly fashion. We have two motions on the table. So I'm gonna do roll call. For. Do we have a second for the motion for the operation budget to be approved?
What was that?
Do we have a motion to proceed with the operation?
Because the the thirtieth is already on a Monday. How are we to uh have a? Meeting before then? I I I suggest to go ahead and approve the budget. The operating budget. This, Griselda, is this accurate or you still need to um? It needs a lot of work. Okay, so within two weeks when we meet again, um, this should be more accurate. And and we can keep this and.
If I may.
At the but look at the revenues.
Yeah, if I may add, the intent is have the operating budget and start scheduling those meetings to discuss what the next budget will look like.
We need to uh have a special meeting to look at this.
We probably will. We'll probably need to have special. That's usually how we've done it. We've met either at City Hall.
Before their our next council meeting. We we need to meet again.
Yes, so and I will have to leave it to council when availability. We just asked to get through at least after July.
Creating costs and just to.
Not so just to clarify, even in two weeks or four weeks, we won't, we may not be able to adopt a final budget. Even in two or three weeks, we may not be able to adopt a final budget. If all the numbers are finalized, then we can go ahead and do that. But but we need to adopt an operated budget before June thirtieth. Is that understood by everyone? Is that understood by everyone?
You had a motion on the floor. It died. For lack of a second. Now your motion, now you asked for a motion.
I don't, well.
And then you guys vote on it and then you have your operating. I'm just assisting. I'm not, I'm not being negative. I'm just telling you how Robert's Rules of Orders works.
So she's still uh doing her job, left her to.
Second, the the mayor's.
No, no, she needs to ask for a, let's see. She needs to ask for a motion.
Do I have a, do I have a second for the operational budget?
I will.
And.
We have a vote by.
Okay, I'm gonna roll.
Just on the operating uh budget. Uh, this, I'd like to have a special meeting next week.
Okay, Councilman Reynosa.
Councilman Reynosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Verdugo.
No.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gomes.
Yes.
Mayor Presiado.
Yes, for the record, uh.
You have to, so the other suggestion would be um to continue the public hearing. Because it's not the closure of it, since we still need to work on the budget.
No, we're still gonna go to the other items. So for the record, uh, decided to take action tonight. That's just, we're still not gonna be voting on it until we continue. So we're going in the process.
Yes, so the operating budget for the actual city budget fees and charges, it's an operational budget and continuing the public hearing, correct, Mayor?
Well, let me, let me get that because it's it's not easy. This is, there's a lot of, a lot of that we need to agree to what sits in 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 here. We're gonna be voting on four items.
Three.
At three, is it three? I thought it's.
First is the city's operational budget, and then it's a successor agency, RDA, debt obligation. And then it'll be the Public Financing Authority. But those are the three.
Yeah, but that's all more information. We need to let the public know about it. Uh, let me see, please, sir. Okay, so uh, well, we'll continue. But because we have to announce all these four items, that's what we'll be going with. So, okay.
You want me to read the resolutions? Is that what you're asking, Mayor?
No, hold on.
Okay.
Because we still have, uh, so we're on public hearing right now and because of uh the uh con- concern. You know, we had to decide. Uh, there was a motion on the table during public hearings. We died on the on the table. So I set up another motion and it passed, so we're gonna continue. But now we're gonna take discussion and action, and then we'll approve that resolution. But before we approve that resolution, we gotta read and know what we're approving, which is. Which is, we found number one, that the foreign residuals are true. Number two, that the authority secretary is authorized to continue the PFA's operations. Number three, that any large or auto scope expenditures. Be brought before the city council for approval. Number four, authorize the secretary or city manager. Or city clerk and all relevant staff to carry out the terms and conditions of this resolution. And to take all steps reasonable, necessary, necessary, proper, and inconvenient or incidental therefore. So we're approving this on an operating budget. That's why it's so important. The city cannot operate, we don't approve this operating budget before June thirtieth. So now, uh, are there any other discussion from council? Uh, we closed public hearing, we're moving to discussion with council. So that will be, is there any, uh?
Sorry, Mayor, for clarification, we're gonna be continuing the public hearing.
Yeah, but at this tonight, we're closing public hearing tonight, but continue of the next, from the next one, wait. Because we're closing public here for tonight, but we'll continue public here on the next uh council meetings. We will bring this item back into consideration. They will open public hearing again. And maybe one more meeting, two more meetings. We don't know now how many more meetings it's gonna take to get all the information. Get the pla- the final budget ready and prepare and approved by council. And before that, also council has to get all that information, read it, and ask questions during the meeting.
And there is a comment from staff that Scott would like to just say something briefly.
Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I've been here for twenty-three years, just barely a little longer than Sheila. She knows also, there has been multiple times in twenty-three years. We have adopted an operating budget and everybody damn well knows that our checking account can cover it. So if you're asking for numbers, you should have asked this a week ago. Council meeting is not the time for our city council to sit and argue about numbers and everything else. You should have asked this. If it was Monday when you got the packet, what are the numbers? Is our checking account good? I've watched this for way too damn long and you guys are acting like assholes.
Please, please.
And we told you, you go there and I just, please, uh, and you can do, you go get this information Monday.
I didn't.
Monday.
I didn't.
You got it Monday.
I didn't.
Online, online?
No, I didn't.
Oh, maybe you were on vacation.
Doesn't matter if I was on vacation or not. So it doesn't matter if I was vacation or not.
So one last thing.
I didn't get it until after I asked for it. I wasn't even gonna get it unless I asked for it.
The agenda.
Talking, he's talking about the new thing.
He's saying he didn't, okay, let's clarify that Mr. Councilmember Verdugo is saying he didn't get anything until he asked for it.
I asked for it.
So the agenda was posted on Monday. The full packet was not finalized until Wednesday morning. That is true.
So.
I did provide you a physical copy today.
Our copy today by he did get it. When when did you post it to the council?
The Wednesday. So just to one point as well, we do provide. Our check, our cash summary, this is from last month. So this does give you our opening balance and if anything's actually gone up, because end of the year, we're we're starting to see a lot of our grants, reimbursements, drawdowns. Yeah. Cash summary is just, again, this shows all the bank activity, a check register, so this does is provided. It is in our council package. This is from the. April twenty twenty-five meeting. So.
I also would like to say that I understand that we have two new council members, that this is their first year approving a budget. And they're not aware of a of a operating budget and a final budget. So that may also makes a difference because they're not aware of uh. It what we're doing here is not, it's not easy. You have to do a lot of reading, you have to get involved and look at the numbers and ask questions. And not just approve it, like, and 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 now that people are trying to say that they can do a better job. It's obvious that it's not easy. It's difficult. We have to go to the whole protocol. And step by step, and they're set in stone. That's why we have legal counsel that will tell us if we're doing something improperly. So this this is never gonna end. It will go back and forth, so go ahead and please come to the podium and state your name again. Because we had already closed the public hearing. So I I don't see why we cannot continue with this.
Because what just happened and that you guys did not speak to your employee? And let him speak to your community like that? I want to know, is there a proper procedure to put a grievance in for that? That is unacceptable. He should never, Scott Davis, right now, you didn't hear his comments? You didn't hear him. You didn't hear him call this group of people, and I think, I felt like it was kinda towards me. Called him and I need you to not speak. I'm speaking.
That was towards council, Sheila. They're acting like asses.
No, Scott, you, you directed some things towards me as well, and I don't appreciate it. And I don't appreciate you even saying that.
Towards you, that you know this, you know this is how this works. We've had operating budgets when you're here.
Process.
And you're here, you've seen operating budgets.
That's all I'm asking. I'm asking in front of the lawyer too, because I want to know what are, what we can do or say, or is there anything?
File agreements against me.
The way they wanna speak to people.
Yeah, you can file agreements, you're still a city employee, right?
No, I'm gonna get a check.
Are you still right?
He accepted my resignation on May.
But are you still receiving a check?
I'm receiving a check, yes.
You're still considered a city employee.
Okay, okay, is that correct?
And, and I think you're violating some of the rules.
I don't know, I just wanted from the lawyer, what's my? Okay, you don't know?
So at this point, this is turning into more into personnel matters, which is, start growing into a gray area. Uh, there is a complaint, there is a grievance. You can file that with the city clerk, we'll receive it. And at this point, yeah. So I, so I, I would, I would suggest we move on from this and it will be looked into. I can assure that to the community, thank you.
Thank you for your understanding, but we need to move on. So now we're gonna move over to discussion actions, so approved by resolution. We have a motion on the table and that is a resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two.
Oh, for the successor agency? Yeah, successor agency, that would be oh-two.
So successor, do we do one by one or?
You can do all three, if you like, one motion to do both item B and C.
So, uh.
So these are separate budgets because they're separate kind of activities that the state requires that are held separately.
So do we have a motion to accept the Avenel Successor Agency? Also RDA debt obligation funding stuff? And continuing the review, the review of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five with the budget and also, uh, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-six budget for the fiscal year of the RDA debt obligation?
And then you want to include also item C for the Public Financing Authority?
And also, item C for the public authority, uh, resolution, that will be, uh, public financing authority resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-three. And that's all we have, that's all we have. So is there a motion?
Can we, can we explain what the debt obligation funds are, just so they know?
The two, we have two bonds, one which actually will conclude next year. Um, if you recall, the beginning of the year, we do the, the ROPS. Um, we have to submit kinda what the debt obligation, what funding we're getting and how we're paying for it, goes through the county. Um, one is still eight hundred thousand, this year it'll have a payment of about four hundred eighty-nine thousand. Um, and then next year, it's still gonna have about three hundred sixty or seventy thousand. Um, the other one, and that one, I believe, was for the water plant back in the eighties and then early eighties, and then late eighties, we had another bond for the curb, um, curb gathers and and sidewalks, thank you, Angie. That one still has about two million left to be paid, that one still has about ten, nine or ten years left. Um, those debt obligations, because they're a bond, that's why we do have to keep a certain amount of money in the bank, a certain amount of money in the, um, in the life, um, certain percentage. So those are, those obligations, we just have to show that we're meeting those obligations, which we have.
Yeah, I believe that one in the, for the water plant with the eighties was for the construction of the water treatment plan number.
Number two.
Second plan. So that was like a loan, the city has been paying on it, uh, since then. And it will be finalized next year, will be paid out finally, over so many years, over twenty, twenty-some years. So, and, and without approving this operating budget, the city won't be able to send a payment to that obligation bond. Then will, the city will inquire into really severe penalties because the city won't be able to, to make those payments. That's why it's so important to approve the budget before June thirtieth. And, and, and I know Mr. Verdugo knows.
Can you explain public, the financial authority, what that is, so they know?
The PFA? In terms of what that's funding?
And, and honestly, we're supposed to be asking these questions before tonight's meeting. Yesterday, the day before, that way we don't come into extending the meeting with these questions that should have been brought up before. And we mentioned it many, many, many times. Educate yourself, be informed, read the agenda, and ask your questions before the meeting.
Yeah, so part of the Public Financing Authority is the operational arm or section of the city that can go out and get and incur debt. So if you look, it is actually a pretty small budget, it's just the, the staffing time and then any obligations for any interest. So that's what it then allows the city to pull bonds and do these other actions. The successor agency, as council may, or older council members may recall, was dissolved in twenty-twelve. And those were mechanisms used to kinda levy future property taxes on projects. This theater was a project that was the last project the city did under the successor agency. So those, those obligations as well. So different mechanisms that have been used to kinda finance, um, projects for the city, to finance the operations levied either through bonds or through future property taxes that are then obligated until those, those debts are paid for.
To continue, we're still waiting for a second. I, uh, made a motion to approve the operating budget, has presented. And, uh, we're still waiting for a second motion.
I second.
A second by council member, uh, Reynosa, Angie, roll call, please.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilman Verdugo?
Was this for, is B and C?
Yes.
Yes, on that one.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gomes? Mayor Preciado?
Yes, for the record, it passed five oh. Operating budget. With that, we're going to item number eight, which is all business, a SRO agreement with the Risa Center and a high school district. And I believe, uh, Mr. Lopez will give any updates on this.
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council Member. So I don't have too much to report on this item. Uh, we've used a kinda, just a kinda update on the discussions and collaborations with the school district. Um, as the city and community knows, we are collaborating on the pool. And we did just get an agreement sent to us this morning, yesterday? Yes. I've not had a chance to fully review it. Um, I believe the price tag though is between thirty-five to forty thousand for the open hours. So that is something I'm told is still open for negotiation. So I need to schedule some time with Superintendent Reese to kinda go over those total costs. I know finance looked in the past, the city would typically give a contribution of about ten to fifteen thousand to keeping, to keeping the pool open, doing maintenance and allowing it to be free to the public. Think we were, the city at some points would then sell concessions as well, just to at least recoup some cost. Um, so that's something I need to schedule some time with Superintendent Reese on. Um, on the other subject, I was unable to attend their meeting on Monday, and I believe they had a meeting today? Yes, I believe they were considering, um, using some of their funds. We had requested to collaborate with them on using funds for after-school activities. We sent, submitted a proposal per their request with some of the ideas we had. Um, they told, at least I was told in advance, that they would be continuing using RAP to do some of those after-school programs or sports. Um, not heard back on the rest of the proposal, since we were also proposing doing things at the rec center, at the veterans hall, utilizing the sports complex, utilizing other, other facilities. Um, and in the future, utilizing the community center as well. So that's again, um, we had a meeting scheduled this Mon, past Monday, that was canceled. So I know with their being on a summer schedule, um, and school being off, not all the administrators are on at the same time. So that's made meeting with their cabinet or their team a little difficult. Um, but I do intend to continue reaching out to Superintendent Reese and see how we can continue the collaboration.
Any questions about the report? No, thank you, and we'll go to the next item of the agenda?
And before, uh, Mr. Mayor, before we move on to number nine, there was something I did forget to include at the top of the meeting. I did mention this to council earlier, but we would like to introduce, if council allows it, an emergency item. Um, this was brought to our attention yesterday afternoon by city engineer Javier Andrade. It's to consider, um, approving a list of projects for SB one, the Total Repair and Accountability Act of twenty-seventeen. Um, staff is requesting that we add it as emergency item and have it as nine B. Um, there is a copy before you, it is in the online packet as well. And I do believe Javier is online to consider it. Um, we continue with the order nine A, which is next item, but there would be, we would need a council vote to add item nine B, which would be adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-four, approving the list of projects for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six for the, um, to be funded by SB one, the Road and Repair and Accountability Act of twenty-seventeen.
Okay. So is there a motion to add item nine B to the agenda? And I believe resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-four.
For discussion.
For discussion. We have a motion by Councilman Verdugo, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilman Reynosa, Angie, roll call, please.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilman Verdugo?
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Gomes? Mayor Preciado?
Yes, so it passed added item nine B to the agenda and, uh, with a vote of nine B. And, uh, with a vote of five oh. With that, we're going to nine A, which is new business. And this is the recognition and adoption of Kings County Fire Ordinance number seven-one-three and also fire hazard severity day. And I believe we'll have discussion and I believe, uh, take your order.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name is Blake Adney, I'm the Fire Marshal with the Kings County Fire Department. So today, like you mentioned before, we're here to adopt or requesting your approval to adopt the resolution of the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance in Kings County. Quick overview, uh, we've been here a while, so I'll do my best. We have quite a bit of information, but I'll do my best to give you guys, uh, Cliff Notes, as long as we're being fully transparent. Um, the Fire Department is requesting the adoption of this resolution recognizing the Kings County Code Ordinance seven-one-three to accurately represent the safety of the citizens, community members, and any person passing through the city of Avonel. These changes also include adoption of the new fire hazard severity zones, which is required by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection pursuant to Government Code five-one-one-seven-eight. This adoption, uh, for the fire hazard severity zones must be reported to the State Fire Marshal's office by July seventh, twenty-twenty-five. I've already have an account, um, with them and will report that. So our recommendation once again is to adopt the resolution, uh, to recognize Kings County Ordinance seven-one-three of the county code. Fiscal impact, um, there is no fiscal impact to the city or the Fire Department budget. However, some proposed changes to the fire ordinance indicates the ability for expense recovery on certain types of incidents and deemed, if deemed necessary. So, uh, quick background, currently the city of Avonel recognizes the Kings County Code as it relates to chapter ten. Uh, and that's the fire prevention stuff. On May twentieth, the Board of Supervisors adopted Ordinance seven-one-three, which is an updated version of this chapter outlining several fire prevention and protection regulations. A summary of each new article is provided below. In short, we made, uh, quite a few updates to our ordinances and that's what this is for. Uh, Article one in general, so the main purpose of this article is the adoption of the California Fire Code and its appendices. This is required to use the California Fire Code and we adopt it every three years when there's a new iteration. So we did adopt that. Article two, abatement of weeds and flammable waste materials, this is what people know as weed abatements or hazard abatements. Uh, there have been no changes to this article and will read as exactly as it did before. Due to the number of changes in chapter ten as a whole, it was determined this was the best to repeal that article and then reenact it during this ordinance update process. Article three, expense recovery. The Fire Department participates in a multi-agency regional hazardous materials team. Uh, this allows all agencies involved to pool resources together and share the costs required to maintain the equipment that this team needs. Per Health and Safety Code one-three-zero-zero-nine-point-six, the Fire Department may seek reimbursement for responses to hazmat incidents. Article three outlines this process and then the intention of Article three is to help offset these costs used in these reimbursement methods when applicable, applicable. Um, Article four, fireworks. Um, this article outlines the definition of safe and sane fireworks as well as illegal fireworks. It also includes the regulation and instructions for fireworks booths. And lastly, this article outlines the process for administrative citations relating to fireworks. Um, article, that was four and five, I apologize. Article six, burning within Kings County jurisdiction. This article defines the burning regulations within Kings County. And we reestablished our legal burning ordinance and the ability to write citations when deemed necessary. Um, Article six, or excuse me, Article seven, adoption of fire hazard severity zones. So this is a new one, this is a big reason we had to make some major updates on our end. Uh, the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection pursuant to Government Code five-one-one-seven-eight established certain portions of the local responsibility area as moderate, high, and very high hazard, fire hazard severity zones. Uh, within these designations, certain construction and general fire safety regulations apply. The Fire Department received maps from the state that defined the affected areas on March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. On April first, twenty-twenty-five, the Fire Department put those maps and corresponding information out for a thirty-day public comment period. And that public comment period has since expired and the Fire Department did not receive any comments from the public. Currently, moderate and high designations exist within the Avonel and Kettleman City areas of the LRA. Because of this, the Fire Department is required to adopt and recognize the fire hazard severity zone maps and follow the established guidelines. Um, yep, we got the maps right there. So as you guys will see, I don't know if you can zoom in any closer. There we go, perfect. So the areas affected in the city of Avonel, as you can see right there lined out on the maps. Uh, the light yellow color is, um, let me make sure I get this right, moderate. And then the dark more orange is considered high. Luckily in Kings County, in the LRA, we don't have any very high. Uh, if you go out to the hills over this way, it gets very high, but that's in the SRA, state responsibility area. So, um, with these requirements, um, areas that are in the high hazard severity zones must have a hazard disclosures, disclosure statement anytime real estate is sold. And all new construction must follow chapter seven A of the California Building Code, beginning January of twenty-twenty-six. Chapter, chapter seven A of the California Building Code, specifically the materials and construction methods for exterior wildfire exposure section establishes requirements for building materials and construction methods to protect structures in areas at risk of wildfires. It focuses on preventing the intrusion of flames and burning embers into buildings. This chapter applies to new buildings and additions, alterations, or repairs made to existing buildings located within the wildland urban interface fire area. For areas in the moderate hazard severity zones, no action is required from this county or city other than recognizing these state maps and adopting this ordinance. So in short, the state came out and, and this is to be used in general for, um, emergency planning. So in short, the state came out and and this is to be used in general for um emergency planning. And the state came out and they used wind models, past fire behavior models and came up with these maps. Um, we didn't have a choice, we didn't choose the maps and we can't change the maps. We can make them more severe, but we can't make them any less severe. And our biggest requirement luckily in Kings County is mostly just to adopt and recognize the maps. Um, anybody can look on, look for the maps on the Kings County website. If you go to the community development section and go to the map and then just make sure you collect the correct filter, but it'll bring up those maps if anybody's concerned to where their house is within that area. Um, there's also these PDF uh formats from the state, but I like the other one because you can zoom in specifically where your your residence is. Um, article eight, administrative citations and liens. So this article was added to clearly define and give the fire department a guiding document on the issuance of administrative citations. Uh, this will ensure consistency and clarity when dealing with the public. These citations are not designed to supplement fire department revenue, but rather to help gain compliance with life safety concerns that need to be corrected. Uh, that is all I have, uh, and I'm here to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you, and first of all, we'd like to apologize for extending the meeting with uh side conversation, but I I know your time is uh valuable. Basically having a lot of officers here. Uh, the uh, can you go back to the map? I just had a question about the map because I think the way they faded the colors, it doesn't really apply to the Fresno County. They should be on the same designation, right? Can you more the other one?
The other one?
Yeah. That one there, where we see the bright orange and stops of the Fresno County line to the northwest. But there should be also the the bright orange color, right? Or not?
Uh, yes, they are. This is a map specifically for the city of Avonel. This is a map we received from the state for the city of Avonel. If you would like, um, Anthony, we could pull up, um, if you go to the county website, we can pull up the full map and and it might give a little more of a clear picture.
Uh, also you mentioned something regarding uh illegal fireworks citations.
Hmm.
Uh, is Kings County Fire Department actually doing a citation for illegal fireworks? Countywide or citywide or how's that working out?
Yes, countywide, um, on the fourth of July, we always up staff and that's it. Illegal fireworks isn't only for the fourth of July, we just deal with them the most during that time. Um, but we get them and there's many different things. There's people that sell illegal fireworks. It's not all about just lighting them. Um, but it reestablished and we updated our fines to meet state standards because anytime we collect illegal fireworks, we have to also pay the state to get rid of them. So that's what the fines, one of the reasons what the fines are for. Um, but we will be out, we will be out looking. Um, at the same time, emergency calls are our first priority on that night. And we, uh, the sheriff's department helps a lot, Avonel Police Department, I'm sure will be out and looking for stuff. And we're always around and available um to help work on the legal process of dealing with those fireworks.
Uh, the reason I ask because I know that some cities are increasing their fines for illegal fireworks from a thousand to two thousand dollars to decrease the amount of uh illegal fireworks, but uh, I don't know if that's the case in Kings County.
We're working on that, um, but the fee schedule for the next fiscal years hasn't been completed yet. So we're just going off of our old finding, the fine that we have is uh fifteen hundred dollars. So we are planning on increasing them, keeping up with every other agency around, but that's what we have right now.
Okay, yeah, cause we we also were, you know, so we can make our community aware that uh the fines are not low.
No, and and I'll say this, look, it's fifteen hundred dollars for something under twenty five pounds of fireworks. Once you go over twenty five pounds of fireworks, you start getting into major government code um violations. Looking at jail time, fines, ten thousand, fifty thousand, and that's completely out of our hands. That's that's big time stuff, so um definitely that's the fine of possessing the firework. Now, that's a whole different ballgame if somebody uses an illegal firework and starts a fire, that's arson. So there's multiple fines there and jail time to be had. So I would recommend to anybody, anybody uh listening and your community to use safe and sane fireworks. Uh, we support the fourth of July, we support um family time, but do it safely, please.
Thank you. So that's uh, that's on the map?
That's the online.
Uh, that's not it. Do you want me to tell you where it is real quick?
Or which map?
Uh, if you go to the Kings County website, yep, you got it, okay, go to the departments tab on the top.
Right there, I'm I'm on the page.
Yep, I see, yeah, so go to the departments tab on the very top. Then go to community development, it's uh third column to the right and then down a little bit. And then go to the left where it says G I S and mapping. Few steps to get there. And then select the link, there we go. And then y'all click agree. And um, on the top right of this map in the green bar, the filters, yeah, scroll down as close to the bottom. There's going to be fire hazard severity zone local and fire hazard severity zone state, you got, you could click them both. So it's kind of, this map's kind of confusing, it shows your city boundary is orange also. You could probably delete that if you wanted, uh, take off the city boundary, yeah, there you go. Okay. So as you can see where that's fire hazard severity zones are, um, that stuff to the south, southwest of the city, that's all SRA out there. Um, you could see Fresno County also in their LRA has high and very high or a high and moderate. But this map, you can zoom into uh, once again, a specific residence and see where exactly your your property falls in place. Some properties and you'll see some property lines are a mix of both. Um, we chose to just let this be, we can, we have the ability to make it more severe for some properties if if both zones go between your property lines, but we chose to let it sit as the state provided it to us.
The orange? The orange is the uh, the outskirts of Avonel or is it the the mountain area? What are we looking at?
So yeah, you're looking at the kind of the uh north, northeast side of town. Um, you can see there's several residences that are affected by this fire hazard severity zone and then also in the uh mountain area. Mostly that's where it is. It's just their proximity of the houses to the mountains and the normal winds that are out there is where the state came up with their uh, and then obviously obvious past incidents and other things that have happened over the years. That's where they came up with the maps.
Can something be done to declassify some of those areas for high density fire?
No, so no, you cannot, and I had multiple phone calls with the state fire marshal's office. Um, there is nothing that we can do to make it any less. Uh, we can make it more stringent, so we could say, we want to say the whole city of Avonel is a high hazard severity zone, but you cannot make it any less. This is done by the state of California.
But what if you create a safe zone with the bulldozer, you know, perimeter that is close to the city and get rid of the dry, you know, weeds and debris and can you make it safer that way? It's it's like for insurance purposes, you know, you're supposed to have a hundred feet of clearance around your house.
Correct.
For fire protection, these can, that can be applied to this area too, I feel like that could be done.
So currently this, um, the hundred foot requirement is not a requirement for moderate and high fire hazard severity zones. Um, if we lived in the red, uh, which is very high, um, it would be a requirement, currently it's not. Now, if you, for example, what it sounds like you're saying is if we went in there and put a huge dozer line across or made a huge clearing. Excuse me, we can do that all day long, the state, it doesn't make a difference because that's, that's the way that they made it.
So it will be effective for the security or the community of residents close by, but not regarding the state declassifying the high risk zone, right? But it still be a safety issue that can be done for those residents that are living.
I think anytime that you're next to the wildland, of course, there's a safety issue. Uh, people want to live in the mountains, mountains are beautiful, people want to live in beautiful places. Um, and there's a little more risk to that, um, but.
No, I'm 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 specifically about the residents that you said that real close to the high density zone, like in Avonel, like.
Yes.
On the southeast part.
Okay.
Yeah. The orange, the orange and not the yellow, but the orange.
Yeah, I I would say, you know, my experience in working in this county, um, talking with other members of our fire department, the state recognizes areas as high and moderate higher fire hazard severity zones. But uh, the community has always done well, our fire department has always done well of keeping fires out of there. Uh, one thing that we have a benefit here, which I hate to say it, we don't get a whole bunch of water, so that grass is um.
Not too high.
Yeah, it's not always the best and that's a benefit for the citizens that are close to it. This is, this is what the state used their computer models and found out. I can tell you from experience, all those areas, uh, they are obviously a higher risk than in the middle of the city. But um, every year with our pre-planning of the fire department and um training, other actions that we take and go and check on these areas, I I don't foresee any major issues to the citizens.
Yeah, I believe it's just a personal or safety issue. Cause I did, I did see about three, four weeks ago, the uh Avonel State Prison was doing control fire burning.
Yes.
Around their uh.
We were doing that.
Oh, you guys were doing it, so that kind of worked really good because that, you know, the way I see it, our community should have some kind of a clearance also.
Clearance, yes.
Cause when there's a fire on the hills and it's coming this way, we have that fire protection in the hills surrounding, let's say a thousand feet from the closest house in our city limits. You know, I think that'll be a huge benefit to our residents.
So there are always things that we can do for fire hardening. Um, there are, um, there's a thing called uh Firewise Communities with state of California. The community can do certain things and um help their area. Within the Kings County Fire Department, we're always looking for areas to train too. And for us to train with real life fire is pretty rare. Um, if that's something the city is interested in and clearing some areas with fire, that's definitely something we can look into. We have the people that can put on those kind of trainings um and 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 do that and clear some areas. Um, I would say for any resident, obviously, just to keep, make sure you keep a much of a defensible space as you can and not let the grass get overgrown.
Yeah, well, I think like you mentioned, maybe there'll be a, a, a future conversation to to have, to see how we can improve.
Yeah.
Our safety zone.
We would absolutely love that. We would love that.
Any other questions?
And more than available to assist with that.
Like we have one from.
From what I understand, this all got brought out by a lot of the wildfires that have been out there and the insurance companies were requesting some of this stuff to be done, right?
Okay, so there is a later, a letter, um, I do not remember his exact name and I did not bring the letter, but it's from the California Insurance State Commissioner. And the letter is stating, because this is the big contention with this, the letter from him states that insurance companies do not use this for insurance. So that's about all I can provide for you. They're not saying that your insurance won't go up, but I, I don't think anything would happen anytime soon because this, we have Avonel, you know, it's it's important to us because our community. However, this is the entire state of California. Um, so they want to be very careful on what they're doing. It could have some major impacts if they started requiring certain things or using this for insurance reasons. But as of right now, they're saying they do not, the insurance companies do not use these maps.
Any other questions for the fire marshal? Well, uh, Tony, you want to continue with the presentation?
Yeah, let me change it over.
So.
Right, so thank you.
We'll take action now.
Yes.
So we have a.
So there is a, a. Mm hmm, that's why I'd explain it very briefly.
Go ahead.
So there's a resolution to recognize the Kings County's ordinance and the new maps. Um, I did speak to city attorney Moses Diaz earlier today. Um, and it is included here in the resolution is that while we are recognizing and adopting a resolution to recognize the map and the ordinance by the county, the city will have to put, have to adopt its own ordinance, recognizing all these items as well. So for now, this will suffice, but we will need to also update it because I believe our fire, our ordinance recognizes fire code nineteen eighty nine, eighty one, ninety one.
Ninety one.
Yeah, so this is an area that's needs some, some updating regardless. Um, but for now, this does suffice. Um, we all recognize and and follow through the same procedure that the county has. It's kind of just um, does it a little faster because an ordinance will require a first and a second reading. But we will prepare those at a future meeting.
Okay.
And and just to be clear, um, with the ordinance itself, it allows us as, I'm fire marshal for Kings County, but obviously with our contract, I'm the fire marshal for you guys. So for us to be able to use the fire code and everything else in the city, um, we do have to have some type of resolution or ordinance, so.
Okay. Uh, you know, this being so new, I know the uh Kings County E O S department is going to have some kind of a training class in the near future, they're going to be talking about um, anything about this new.
I'm sorry, the E O S?
Yeah, I believe they're having a uh four hour class, training class, E O S.
Oh, yes, okay.
E O S, yeah. So I think in the next two weeks, next week or the following week, I think they're having a some kind of, they're going to be talking about also this uh new implementation.
Yes, um, I don't, I don't know if this will be on the presentation, however, I will say that they're under our fire department and we we work hand in hand with them, so they work on the emergency, a lot of emergency preparedness things. O E S is actually the ones that helped us create our webpage for this and they did a lot. So they're very aware, very well aware of it and uh we'll be working together for this stuff.
Yeah, because I believe cities, cities uh were invited to that presentation, so I don't know if they're going to be. Maybe, maybe the chief can tell that something.
Yeah, so uh, Office of Emergency Services falls under the county fire uh department. Uh, there is an exercise coming up, I believe it's July fourteenth, basically it's tabletop exercise. Uh, what it's for is uh to exercise your emergency planning and what's already in place and then actually review what your processes are in relation to the county, if in the event that U C has stood up and there's actually a disaster. Um, that is absolutely not directly related to this ordinance. But that is something that we do on an annual basis as part of E M P G, which is Emergency Preparedness Grants. Okay, so basically we're funded to help do that. E O C uh, emergency operations basically through Office of Emergency Services has a lot of grant opportunities. And that's how we're able to write a lot of uh, different policies and procedures. And that's what gets you ultimately, we exercise those plans. That's what gets you your cost recovery in the event of a disaster. So the flood that occurred, basically we're still working on that and that was in twenty three? Twenty twenty three, we're still working on that, but that's how we're ultimately going to be able to recover the the dollars for the county and make the road repairs a week. So that's what that type of exercise is for.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Sure.
Excellent, yeah, so at this time, we are asking council to consider adopting resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three. Uh, typo on the agenda, it should be thirty three, not thirty two.
No, it says thirty four. When the agenda says thirty four.
At thirty two, it's item nine A. Thirty two would be the operating budget, this would be thirty three.
Okay. So uh, is there a motion from council to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three? As a move. We have a motion by Councilmember Verdugo and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Gomez. Roco, please.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Verdugo?
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gomez? Mayor Preciado?
Yes, so for the record, it passed with a five O. So the other one counts hand to hand, uh, nine B.
Yes.
So now we'll add the uh, the emergency item. So to, you want to present that one too?
I believe Javier is also on the land.
Yeah. Good, good, good evening, uh, Council Mayor, um, Javier Andrade here. Uh, so, um, yeah, I apologize for bringing this this last minute, but um, uh, it's it's required to be submitted before the end of the month. Um, and what this is, is it's pretty simple, it's just our, for SB one funding, they require us, the state requires us to submit um, a resolution along with the reporting, talking about how we're going to use the funds and and what we've been doing, we've been banking it up, SB one, um, as we know for the cutoff. Um, so uh, in in the description there, the background, um, we're talking about how we're going to use the funds and um we we're talking about how we're gonna use the funds and and we're talking about that. Uh essentially, we're banking it up to try to accomplish our our cutoff road rehabilitation. Right now, we're we're hoping to do the granite overlay section next year. Um with with uh gas prices going up and down, it's uh we're really close to to um being able to afford it, so I'm hoping that we can do this next year. Unless we have something crazy that goes on with with the gas prices, which affects the the cost of asphalt.
Any questions? Did you not with the presentation?
No.
Yeah.
What, you losing? It's still online? Are you there Javier?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't hear. Uh if there's any questions, essentially, it's staff recommends the city council. Um Vavonel to adopt Resolution uh twenty twenty-five thirty-four, approving the list of projects for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six to be funded by SB one Road Repair and Accountability Act.
Thank you. There any question, comments, or a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five touch thirty-four?
Motion.
Motion. So we have a motion by Councilmember Reynosa, it's very second.
I'll second it.
Taken by Councilmember uh Hernandez. Angie Rocco, please.
Councilman Reynosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Google?
Yeah.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Gomez? Mayor Preciado?
Yes, thank you. So for the record, it passed five oh. Uh Javier, once you're online, uh can you give us a little update with the Avonel car off uh uh ru- work that they did that was uh a free or charged to the city due to uh warranty uh repair work?
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, so as you know, uh last year we did a chip seal, which and and we also did some some uh grinding on on the areas where the wheel path is of the vehicles where we had a lot of the potholes uh forming. So the the grinding helped um fix the, I guess, the under the under uh laments of the asphalt. It it we were able to put a structural section. But we also did a chip seal, which essentially seals the the road and extends the life um by at least a few more years. Essentially, what what we're doing with the chip seals, we're sealing all the cracks so that when winter came around, um all that water didn't go into the cracks and and create more potholes and start destroying a road even more. So um with that seal, that kind of gets us here to where we can keep banking our funds so to have a bigger project and afford the the rehab. So what what when they came, when they did the seal, it didn't adhere properly to the new asphalt that was put in there for the uh for the areas that was granted out. And that happens here or there, depending on the temperature of the day, and it was getting colder. Um and and there's a few other factors, but uh luckily the contractor was was very honest and said, hey, look, let me come back next year. And where the seal didn't adhere properly, I'll come back when it's hot and I'll and I'll reseal it, all the areas that you can see. Um you probably noticed the rocks were kind of coming off of the of the seal. So those are there. He came back under warranty and he he did it for free, um which I'm really thankful for them to for doing that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the report. So with that, we'll move over into our next item. Actually, the uh we'll be going into uh after item ten, we'll be going into closed session and we'll be reporting uh is there anything to report out of closed session, we'll be doing so. But for now, we'll go into item ten, which is correspondence.
No correspondence at this time.
Announcements?
No announcements at this time.
Mm hmm. Closing comments for city deputy clerk, city clerk?
No, not this time.
No closing comments.
Closing comments by uh our city manager?
Of course. Thank you, honorable mayor. So I'll keep it brief. Um just want to remind everyone about the city's Independence Day celebration happening this Saturday. That will be uh starting six P M. At Rice Park. Hope everyone can make it. We do anticipate having quite a number of vendors, have a lot of fun activities. Uh you'll see a lot of city staff trying to just promote a lot of good community and goodwill. So hopefully everyone can come out. It'll be fun. A lot of it will be free. Um just the food, right? But the activities, yeah, there you go. So hope everyone can make it. Um otherwise, again, appreciate for a speedy meeting. I know some things get a little difficult and tense, but you know, as a community, we do try to stay together and try to move things forward as much as possible. You know, not everything and every process is how everyone would like to see it happen, but we are working on, you know, continuing to to go step by step with everything, just like with the budget. We will be having budget hearings. Um we'll coordinate with council on when to have those meetings per everyone's availability and try to have those as soon as possible. Um I know finance has just been super swamped, just closing out the books, trying to get all the reimbursements, drawdowns, just like you saw with our city engineer as well, trying to ensure that we're gonna be getting all those funds into the city. So and thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. And any closing comment by legal counsel? No, thank you. We'll go to uh Councilmember Reynosa. Do you have any closing comments? Uh closing comments by Councilmember Verdugo?
No, thank you.
And closing comments by Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, I just want to welcome the interns. I also want to thank the community members too for showing up to our meeting. And tomorrow at the senior center, there's gonna be an elder abuse uh seminar. It starts from, I think, from nine to twelve. I wish everybody could make it. And I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July. That's it.
Actually, on top of that, the seminar they're having, they're gonna have a breakfast for the seniors and everybody's invited. I think it's free. It's a big breakfast from seven to four. I don't, yeah, so it's big breakfast tomorrow at the Vetsaw, the senior centers.
Team Commission on Aging have been celebrating Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And they are hosting, they've hosted it in Arbona two weeks ago. Last week was in Corcoran. And then this week it's in Avonel. Yeah, thank you for reminding me.
Uh closing comments by uh Mayor Pro team Gomez?
I'd just like to say thank you for everyone to uh that came and participated and and made their views known. Um and just have a happy, safe Fourth of July.
Thank you. Uh I just wanted to report to council that have been representing the city at different meetings at the county level. Uh Wednesday, I went to a card. Uh they uh were working on uh the grand opening of the the brand new uh card building on Laney Avenue. Uh this is a loan uh project that a cost that is gonna be about thirty-four million dollars. Uh with uh the uh funding from uh former uh president uh uh Biden, Joe Biden, yeah. He actually, the city of uh the the card, Kings County uh rural area transit got a grant from uh the Biden administration uh for uh infrastructure uh projects and uh and they're already uh thinking a grand opening December twelfth, I believe, December twelfth. In the morning, the community of Avonel have been invited. I believe the seniors have been invited to be there present. They're gonna have music, uh food and some entertainment. Uh it will be a nice addition to the county uh Transportation Department. Uh we also elected a uh the new uh board for the uh Kings County Association of Governments uh with uh Doug Baboon, uh I'm sorry, John Evans being uh reelected for a second year. And uh by uh chair will be uh Patricia Matthews, uh mayor for the city of Limor. Uh planning a the San Joaquin uh Policy Council already working on uh the Valley Voices trip to Washington, D C to lobby the uh legislator legislators, congresspeople and senators for uh grants uh grants to the state of uh for our cities in California. Uh there there's gonna be uh also uh like they mentioned tomorrow, uh actually, uh we did uh trying to help our seniors, we took them to Armona uh two weeks ago and last week we took them to to Corcoran. There was a lot of more people in uh Armona that they were in Corcoran, but uh they didn't have Elvis, that's probably why. They didn't have uh Elvis Presley there. And and tomorrow will be here in Avonel. Uh hopefully, we'll have people from Armona. Uh Tampa and Corcoran also coming over. Uh it's a nice event that it actually lasts about three, four hours. But uh they do raffles, they do free free food, uh and there are also a lot of informational booths. The city is planning to also have a booth there. Right, Tony? So um looking forward to um uh we have a another event coming soon. I was in a um Zoom meeting with uh Water Education for Latino Leaders. They're planning a trip to uh Big Creek uh Lake that uh to learn about the uh it's a Southern California uh hydroelectric uh producing plant up in the Sierra Nevada, parts it's part in the Sierra Nevada, part of Nevada and California. I believe it's in the middle of the two states. Uh it's gonna be a three day trip. Uh I'll be uh I'll be joining them. They'll be coming from L A area, but they'll be coming through Fresno and I was invited because I've been a a member from uh well since twenty-ten and I've been attending their conference. Uh the city won't be incurring into any uh accommodations or fees. Uh it's gonna be paid by uh that organization, so looking forward to learn more about the uh data. I believe also uh I attended Diablo Canyon a couple of months ago, uh and I believe uh Mr. Lopez has been invited to join the the tour tomorrow, tomorrow. So you'll be missing the senior uh.
It's currently right now, I got a few calls a while ago. Um should have been in San Luis Obispo a while back, but I'll be making the trek later tonight.
Mm hmm. The the one thing I would like to mention about the Diablo nuclear plant in in uh Avila Beach or in that area, uh it produces ten percent of California electricity. Uh they're working very closely with the governor to extend the uh it was supposed to be closed in twenty twenty-five, but they got an an extension for five more years, so they're looking at maybe closing it again in in twenty thirty. But there have been participating in some meetings where they're urging elected officials at different levels, supervisors, uh assembly members, senators, mayors and 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 any uh any elected that are able to attend to those meetings to uh urge the governor to keep it open for uh not only until thirty twenty thirty, they're actually uh looking at on an extension for probably twenty years. But uh I believe uh that it is a very safe plant. Security is incredible. It takes you about half an hour just to go through uh through the uh clearance. There's so much security inside there and even when you're inside, every department is is you cannot go in without a a escort with a badge and an I D. That will open doors for you. So it it's a unique plan, uh I believe, uh so close to us and uh unfortunately, access is 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 not open most of the times for everybody, but uh you know, I would like to recommend uh a visit to it. Well, we're going to close session and we have to report anything. We'll be doing so. And lastly, you know, if if the intention, my intention was not to be rude when uh we were uh interrupting uh the agenda. Uh I would like to apologize if in any intention anybody felt uncomfortable, but uh like I mentioned before, we know we need to conduct city business, uh council meetings and uh we like a community input. But we have to respect the protocol, the guidelines and appreciate that. So hopefully, uh we will have, continue to have uh community members present. And I will ask our council also to our our staff to also provide translation for council meetings because I believe sometimes we may have one or two people that don't uh speak English and they may need a translation also. So it's important that everybody feels included and uh and and uh, you know, I believe at one time we're paying a hundred dollars uh for an interpreter, but for lack of participation from community, we stopped doing that. But now it's a lot of people coming into our meeting, so I believe we should bring it back. But I think I will let council to consider that option. And 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 that may be another part-time job for a community member that would like to to translate. Because at one time, our city clerk was translating, but people were saying that she wasn't really translating, that she may be influenced by being a city employee, not be doing the the right translation. So we see we may have to pay somebody neutral to translate, so it's not a city employee. So uh that's something for council to consider in the future. And and I I believe all all you know, all anybody has to do is ask for translation, either English or Spanish. It'll be it'll be make available at that request and also accommodation, wheelchairs or whatever the case may be. So with that, we'll go uh may uh we're going to close session. Thank you for coming and we'll see you next time.